I'd like to call to order the committee, the whole, for August 26, 2025 at 6:34 PM. Attendance roll call.
Alder Person's Wolf.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Bryce.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Doogie.
Here.
And Madden.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law on Friday, August 22, 2025.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes from the committee, the whole, from July 22 and August 12?
We approve.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman?
There's a, there seems to be a typo in the minutes for August 12. The bullet point is kind of out of line. The third, I think it's the third bullet point.
Under which section? Under closed?
Yeah.
Wait, you're talking about the formatting of it?
It's, it's, is this the, here it is right there, it should be right there.
What is, can you verbalize that so I can?
It says, "Discussion regarding innovation grant." That should be where the bullet point begins.
Oh, so you're just talking formatting, it doesn't change the content? Okay, so we don't need a, we don't need a change for that, we can just make that. Is, any subsidence changes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. New business, discussion with financial advisor from Baird on capital borrowing. Kevin, how are you doing?
Great, thanks.
Thanks for coming tonight.
My pleasure. You'll be able to, some very interesting schedules, I apologize for all those, all those hours. Well, I'm doing that, I'll just introduce myself briefly. My name's Kevin Mullin, as was mentioned earlier, and I work in the public finance area for Baird as a director, and I work with municipalities, including Muskego. I assist in borrowing money in the funding of projects, capital projects and other things. My last involvement with the city was back in 2022.
Hang on a second, can you wait till you speak by the microphone, I can barely hear you.
Yes.
Is this better?
Yes.
Great.
As I mentioned, my name's Kevin Mullin, I work with Baird in the public finance area, and I'm a director in that area, and we help Wisconsin municipalities when they consider borrowing money. I've worked with the city on a number of projects, most recently back in 2022, I believe, the last time you borrowed for refinancing. And recently, your finance director had reached out and just said, you know, "We're considering capital projects, if we were to look at a borrowing for capital, to meet our capital project needs, how could we structure that?" And as we discussed it, I wanted to talk about one of the borrowing options that could be considered. This is a borrowing option that would potentially fund capital projects, a portion of your capital projects for the current cycle, but more importantly, I think it's a structure that is a little bit forward-looking, and so allows you to, you know, set up and establish a pattern of meeting your capital project needs in the future. And so, it's not just looking at a capital project need now, but it's also anticipating what some of those capital projects would be in the future.
So, setting this up a little bit, a lot of our discussions, and what's driving this, is our discussion about roads.
Correct.
We've been, Scott's done a couple presentations on showing you where we are with our road, where we are with our road program, where we need to be with our road program. Keep following, I believe, without putting words in his mouth, off my memory, with our current plan of attack, we would touch the 1, 2s and 3s from the FASER rating in the next 70 years, the way we're doing it, and by that time, the rest of the roads are going to be 1, 2 and 3, so we need to find a way of getting more aggressive with it. So, the only way of really doing that would be to set out a long-term plan for a capital improvement plan or borrowing, and that's what is in front of you. Now, Kevin, we'll explain how this all works.
Hang on a second. This is going to be in the capital budget, right?
Well, no, this is just talking about if, the effects of borrowing. Let him, let him go through his presentation first.
Well, I'm just saying, before we do that, I want to get organized, where's Rhodes on our handout here, so I can match up what he's talking about?
It's not, we're just talking about the concept of-
But there's, but is Rhodes in here? Because I don't see, I see test corners, nothing.
No, it's not.
Okay, then I'm right, all right. I thought maybe I'm missing it.
No.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thanks. And really, the reason that this is important now is because when you consider this, if you were to borrow in 2026, and if that's the direction that you potentially go, you may want to consider starting to get in a pattern that allows you to meet not only the current needs, but needs that might be in front of you in the future. And so, that's what this plan is meant to address. And so, if we could, I'm just going to read, or kind of take you through from left to right on this schedule, and show you how we approach this process. So, up in the top left-hand corner, you'll see a gray line, it says levy year of 2024 and year due of 2025. So, what that's meant to show you is that in the levy year is the year in which you build your budget, and the year due is the year in which you make a debt service payment from that budget. And so, for example, in the year 2024, you built a budget for payments this year in 2025. That budget included debt service payments, annual payments for all of the obligations that the city currently has, consider it like a mortgage payment for all of your loans. The mortgage payment in the tax levy last year, for 2025 payments this year, was $2,291. From that, you also applied some conservation funds that you receive annually to reduce that payment. So, what you asked taxpayers for, if you look all the way to the right, was $2,240,000 to cover your debt payments for obligations and borrowings that you've done in the past. Your current budget that you're building in 2025 for payments in 2026 will be very similar. It's likely that, if you look all the way to the right, that payment would be $2,240,000 again. However, if you're considering funding some of your capital project needs with borrowed money, which is a very likely consideration, if you were to borrow $5 million in spring, summer of 2026, you'd then have a payment in 2027. And so, in the box in the middle is an estimate of what a 15-year borrowing looks like, if that borrowing is spread out over that 15-year period of time, assuming an interest rate of 4.3%. We've been conservative in that estimate, we've looked at what rates are today, plus 50 basis points, to assume that's what your borrowing cost would be in six to eight months. So, if you then were to schedule that out, you'd have a principal payment, that's an annual principal payment that is scheduled from 2027 through 2041, and then an annual interest payment that likewise would be due, just to give you a sense as to what that would look like.
Can I interrupt here?
Yes.
You, how much did you say, four or five million? What did you say?
About $5 million.
Five million?
Yep.
In 2026, payments due in 2027, 15-year loan?
Correct.
And that's pretty normal?
Yeah, for projects like this, and as I go through this, it'll make more sense, state statute allows you to borrow for up to 20 years, however, you know, for, you know, kind of an ongoing maintenance plan, you probably wouldn't stretch things out that long, just knowing that you're constantly coming back in addressing a cycle of need. So, you could borrow for up to 20 years, you could borrow for as little as one to two years, but obviously, the shorter the borrowing, the higher the payment. So, a balance of 15 years for conversation is where we thought we would start tonight.
So, you're saying our payment would be 385 per year?
No, so, that first payment, interest payment, if you look on the total side, that first payment would be just an interest payment of $184,000, and it would increase the second year to 612, principal and interest.
Got it.
And then level out at 485.
Okay, that leads me to the next question. So, we're going to borrow $5 million, say, for 15 years, and we're going to do some road projects for $5 million worth, which is probably four years, off the top of my head, I have no idea if I'm right or wrong. And then we're going to come back in four years and say we want to borrow another $4 million for 15 more years. So then, we're going to take our 485,000, or second year, 6,000, well, let's just go with the 500,000, round it off. So now, we're going to be at a million dollar payback for, on top of that, from year, what, 6 through 15, and then we'll have a new loan, which would equal the million, the, yeah, would equal $1 million from 1 through 15, and then in four years, we're going to go, it'll be a million and a half.
Yeah. So certainly, actually, this is actually playing into the conversation that we're about to have.
Right, well, that's what I want, I just want to get that out in front, so I understand it.
But you're not understanding, so let him explain it.
If you look then, in the 2027 year, your payment would go up a little bit, and it's, similarly, again, in 2028. The reason that we then kind of level that out at 485 is, to your point, because it's very likely that you're going to have a cycle of need to continue to address road projects throughout the community. So, hypothetically, we said, okay, if we were to borrow in 2026 for $5 million, how does it look if we continue to borrow every other year, $5 million every other year moving forward? Could we work that into our budget, and what's that look like from a tax impact standpoint? So, reading left to right, as I mentioned, we've got the 2026 borrowing scheduled in at $5 million, and then there's a column that says hypothetical future borrowing. That hypothetical future borrowing is an assumed, every other year, $5 million borrowing at 5% moving forward. So, it assumes that we continue to layer that in. I'm not saying that that's necessarily what would happen, but it allows for that, and it gives you a sense as to what that cost would be. So if you were to add your existing debt service, less the conservation fund transfer, plus this new $5 million borrowing, and then add it in an annual, or I'm sorry, a semi-annual, take that back, biannual, every other year, $5 million borrowing at 5%, what would that look like? And if you look at that combined debt service column, we would go from $2,240,000 in the budget that you're working on right now, slightly higher, to $2,527, roughly cascading, increasing until we got to about $4,200,000 out into the 13th or 14th year of that structure. In terms of-
If we cut that in half.
In terms of tax impact, if you look under the combined tax-supported mil rate, we would be going from a mil rate in 2025 of 0.46% or 46 cents per 100,000, to roughly 45 cents in 2027, 50 cents the year after that, and then plateauing eventually at 63 cents. So, the goal is to plateau at a tax rate that is sustainable to maintain that level of investment in the community. That tax rate is based on annual growth in value of 1.5% a year. You've obviously had growth in bear market value that's much greater than that. A lot of that growth has been economic growth or inflationary growth, 1.5% is really more in line with what real growth would likely be, so a more conservative estimate in terms of growth.
Let me interrupt you, so I can understand what you're doing here. So, you're telling me, we'll take 25 through 41?
Mm-hmm.
And we'll go down to the combined levy services? So, you're telling me that every other year, say, seven, seven times in 15 years, roughly, right, every other year, we're going to go from 2.2 to 4.4 million dollars?
In debt service payments, annual debt service payments?
Payments.
Mm-hmm.
And we're going to raise everybody's rate per thousand roughly 20 cents at today's rate?
Correct, about 15 cents, 20 cents, sure.
For 100,000, right?
Yeah, somewhere between 15 and 20 cents.
So, okay, I'm just trying to figure that out. All right, just want to catch up and see where you're at.
Sure. The other factor that's included in here is, sure.
This is like- This is like seven borrowings?
Correct.
Okay.
More like eight.
Okay.
Yeah. And it doesn't go out, you know, so some of the later borrowings would continue out 15 years, it just, every borrowing is assumed that it's 15 years, we didn't show all of that on here, but it's just to show, we would get to a point where we would have, you know, kind of a sustainable program of investment, $5 million every other year, and what that impact would be from a tax rate perspective.
So roughly, you'd be eight times five, it'd be $40 million borrowed in the first 15 years, or, yeah, in the first 15 years. Did I have another question here on that? Well, my question was, why only interest only on the first year?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, the goal is obviously to, you know, step into this increase, and so, our payments are the highest in the first, in the earliest part, our existing payments are higher in the first portion of the plan. You could have a higher payment earlier, but that tax jump for the first year would be higher, and so it's a way to step into the increase.
So paying only interest only, we're going 46, 41, 45, 50, how much higher could it be? I mean, you're, you're-
You could, you could, you would have discretion-
By the second year, you're paying interest on interest.
You could have discretion to go higher in that first year, it's just a hypothetical to show you how it's possible to step into it. So that's kind of the bare minimum step increase.
And every year you borrow, the first year interest only?
Uh, no, as you, as, as, there's more flexibility, there's principle that's-
And that includes not the interest-only payments you're showing me on the combined levy support debt?
Yep, correct.
Okay.
And that really is discretionary, it's really meant to show that that's the minimum impact in that first year. It could be higher, and that would be up to the council's discretion at the time you did it.
Just one other question, is we threw $5 million at him, or he threw it at us?
What?
The $5 million borrowing.
We, we gave him the number, $5 million, that could give you for an example. Obviously, you borrow less, the number's less, you can borrow more, the number's more, but-
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, I don't know how you guys came up with the number, or how much you planned to spend in so many years, those are discussions we need to have as well, rather than throwing a $5 million number out there to say, "Sounds good."
Well, no, it's, it's really more to give you perspective as you're considering what that capital budget might be.
It's conceptual, it's conceptual to show you that if you go into a capital improvement plan, that once, if you're committed to doing a borrowing every two years, you get, within the first couple of years, once you take that initial roughly 70, say, $60 hit per household, it stays level at that continually, and we're able to address the roads. So you really only take the hit the first couple of years, and then it levels off and stays at that 63 cents continually, while we're still borrowing new and improving the roads continuously.
Question?
Yes.
Are there any prepayment penalties?
Uh, no, well, so traditionally, and, you know, again, this is hypothetical, but traditionally, when bonds are sold in the public market, which is how most municipalities fund their public improvements, with tax-exempt bonds, bonds are sold with a call provision, meaning you as the community have the ability to prepay that loan. Right now, there's no penalty, meaning there's no higher interest rate if those bonds are callable after eight years, so an eight-year call. You could go shorter, you could have a call provision that is six months, but you would pay a much higher interest rate the shorter the call provision is. And so, right now, an eight-year call really is the place where there's no additional cost in terms of interest rates, so that's what we've assumed.
Do you see the fact that rates in general will go down in the next couple of months? If we're waiting till spring, is that going to affect this?
Yeah, so, I think short-term rates may go down a little bit in the next few months as, you know, we get closer to a decision by the Fed to potentially lower Fed funds rates, but the yield curve, meaning that, you know, the, the cost of a one-year borrowing compared to a cost of a 15-year borrowing, the further out you're on, are on the yield curve, we don't see those rates changing as much as the shorter rates.
And then if we're, we're borrowing this for roads, is that then specifically, we are using this for roads and roads only, not any other projects?
Yeah, and that would be up to council's discretion, but generally speaking, when bonds are issued, there's a purpose for the issuance, and as it's described, that's what those purposes are for, so-
So they're not putting them towards another project?
Yeah. It, it would depend on how the purpose language of the bond is written, but right now, it's anticipated for roads.
Alderman, Doogie?
Yeah, um, quick question. So, you show this where the mil rate gets to the 63 cents, and then just kind of levels out there. For any citizens listening, they're going to want to know what that's going to do to their-
On a $400,000 home, it's about $68.
Okay.
How much, $68?
$68 on a $400,000 home.
And that's at today's rate, so this can actually change depending on what happens with other tax purposes, but that's a whole other subject down the road.
I think his, his forecast that he has on here, he's trying to be conservative, so, you know-
It depends on spending, right?
Right.
And then, you, you talked about paying it off, and now you, refinancing involved in here, is that-
It's possible, and in fact, the city is, you know, taking advantage of-
As rates go down, right?
Yeah, we've taken advantage. The last time we did a borrowing, when we got our bond upgrade, was, we took advantage of the lower rates at the time.
I know we've done that in the past, yeah. And there's a wait, waiting period for that to happen, or?
Well, so, it's-
Because you mentioned eight years on something before.
Eight years is where you can call it being a current call. It's also possible to do an advance refunding, meaning a refunding ahead of the call date with taxable interest rates, taxable debt, so interest rates would really have to come down significantly in order for that to be, to make sense, but it's possible.
So since you, you're not paying off the, you have this window, like eight years from now, when you can literally do the refinancing, however, you can do it before then by borrowing the money, and then you're essentially hedging it until that one, you're, you're paying the one with the lower rate until that happens, and then when that opportunity comes, so that's why he's saying you need a higher, you need a low, a much more of a drop to take advantage of that, but there are times where that makes sense.
Yeah, hopefully, that's coming down the road.
We're all hoping for that.
The other thing that I think is worth noting here is that we did assume that TID-10 would potentially close in 2026, so we've added the cost, or not the cost, the additional value of TID-10 to the general tax base. You know, again, that's hypothetical, but the difference between it closing next year or not closing next year in terms of this analysis equals about a one and a half cents in terms of a lower interest, or lower tax rate.
So, in, in your experience, I guess, I don't know, if we earmarked this only for roads, do people escrow that money if there's a savings or something, how do, I mean, what do they do?
Right, if you're, we're assuming you're borrowing every other year for roads, correct? And it's likely that you're not going to get two years of roads done in one summer, so you'd have this money for a period of time while you're waiting to use it, you can invest that money, earn interest on it, until you're actually spending it for roads.
Okay, I guess the next question I have, and you probably don't have the answer, but the mayor might, if I understand correctly, every year we're putting in $750,000 of tax money, right?
We're using, operating for our road program of $750,000 annually, yes.
Annually, we're doing that every year, and how many years do we put, do we say we're going to do the million, every third year?
Every other, every third year.
Every third year, so, if we take the third year, by 15, that would be five, so that's $5 million. If we take the $750,000 in 15 years, that's 7.5, and another, say, 10 million, I'm just going to throw some numbers out there, so that's $15 million that we're, we're funding right now. And we want to borrow 40 million, where's that 15 million?
Where's it go? What do you mean?
Are we still putting the 750 in?
Well, the 750, no, I might, well, that's up to you guys, so, we're going to, wait, let me, you asked a question, let me answer it. So, right now, we're just looking at the impact of $5 million in borrowing every other year. Part of your conversations that you're going to have as we go through this budget process together is, how do we, how are we going to address the $1.6 million deficit we have right now? So, we're going to look at things, and one of the options that you, that's going to be presented for you guys to choose, what you want to do on it, would be to take the road program, at least for this year, and eliminate it from the operating and just borrow for the roads. So, that's one of the options, which would cut that deficit in half. That's one of the options you're going to have presented. There's other options that, you can keep it in there and make cuts in other areas, you know, if you want to cut back in any of the other departments, but we're, we're trying to come up with $1.6 million, so it's not going to be, it's going to be tough conversation this budget.
No doubt, it's not going to be fun this year to be an alderman.
No.
They, the question here is that, or the answer to that, is that I never known the government ever to take something away and put it back in, and fine example would be the tow roads. So I, I, I gotta, I guess the easiest way to say this is, I would definitely vote no for all this if we do, and, and I'm the guy who wants roads. I've been talking for a long time to get road repairs, and now we're talking trail repairs, because they're getting neglected as well. I would, I would vote no, 100% if we did not keep the $750,000 in, because really, we're borrowing 40 million when we have 15 million already dedicated every year towards that, according to today's standards.
And that's, that's-
That would be, that would be $35 million.
That's a choice that council's going to have to make, you know, the options on that are going to, are going to be cutting to the services, so, I mean, it's not like there's, you're going to have to make that choice of either put, taking it in there and replacing it with a borrowing, which most communities do, or you can leave it in the operating, and then, you know, not hire another police officer, not make investments in our fire, our, you know, any, any of the departments, pick one, it doesn't really matter.
I love those signs on the side of the road, "Vote yes," but anyway.
But, so, those are all choices that you're going to, you're going to go through, but, I mean, that's, that's why we have seven of you to discuss and decide what you want to do with it.
And that's why I asked where the road was in here, because I wanted to see what's proposed. Now, there's nothing proposed for me to take a look at, to talk about where $750,000 is going to come from. I mean, I can pick the-
The $750,000 has nothing to do with the capital budget right now. It's, right now, it is in the operating, so we're talking about capital.
Yeah, that's why I asked before.
But, but we always go that route, we always talk capital first, so.
Any other questions?
No, I was just going to thank him, but I forgot his first name.
Kevin.
Kevin, thank you, Kevin.
My pleasure, and again, food for thought, but I think it's, you know, a thoughtful step to be considering this early, so.
Any other questions on the actual borrowing and how that finance, how that part would work?
Yeah, I-
I, oh, sorry. I was just going to ask, and this is no offense to Kevin, and probably a discussion just for council, but is Baird the only option? Are there other things we can shop around as a city for other terms or other options?
We can always, we can always look at, we can, yes, you can always look at different financial advisors, the math is the math, so, you know, it just comes down to which ones you're going to be using and what their fee structure is, and we always, we do look at that, you know, every few years, so.
Okay.
And then I was going to ask, in your experience, do most communities only do borrowing, or do they put money in the, in the-
Yeah, so, and I think this is, your struggle is the struggle that every community in Wisconsin has right now. So with levy limits, you know, it's very difficult to continue to maintain services within the constraints of levy limits. One of the things that are outside of levy limits are borrowing costs, and so, many communities don't have the luxury of having a, a fund for annual maintenance. It's been eaten up because, you know, they've had other pressure that has come along. And so, most communities, many communities, are borrowing for capital projects because they can add the cost of borrowing outside the levy limit, because they need the resources inside the levy, levy limit to address other needs, like, you know, wage pressures, safety and ambulatory services, fire services, things like that, that are putting pressure on the budget that are constrained by the levy limit. So we do see, we've seen definitely a rotation to, you know, more debt service borrowing for capital projects.
And I would only recommend doing a borrowing for something that has a life of 20 years or more. I don't want to be borrowing, you know, the, the old, you know, joke that the council, the city did years ago, where they stuck their, you know, 1972 Javelin police cars into a 20-year borrowing, didn't make a lot of sense, so it's, I would look at structure, capital items that have a long life, because that way, the people that are using them over the life are paying, paying for them annually over the life as well. You have, if you stick it all in one-time payments, today's taxpayer is paying for it and tomorrow's aren't, and you may be retired and move to Florida by then, and you paid for it, and you're, you know, you could have gotten better police service or something else in the meantime.
Well, I have to say though, that we, or I do, take pride in not being like other communities, so that's one thing I take in factors, we, we don't want to be like other communities. We don't wanna be like other communities. We try to be frugal and do the best we can, so.
I agree. And we are, I mean, you look at the chart out there, it shows us our, we, our borrowing, the amount that we have borrowed is one of the lowest in the state. We don't do annual borrowings, most communities do. We, you know, we, we have the gift of the landfill, which provides, you know, one to two million dollars a year that pays a lot of our capital costs. So we have been fortunate, but, you know, you know, service costs go up more than our, our ability to increase our budget, so. Gotta find some ways to either cut farther and, you know, you guys have done a good job over the last twenty years of making sure we are frugal. There's just not a lot of fat left.
You know, the conversations kinda started with, when we, when we, I guess maybe the last year or a little longer, the last two years. If we borrowed and then it went to maybe four million, maybe five million, maybe three years, I mean, we have a scenario here of only one option. We're gonna, you know, it's, I know it's just hypothetical, it's five million every other year, you know, we need to know some numbers to decide where we're gonna go with millions of dollars. Do we need to spend five million every other year?
And that is the plan, Alderman. We will go through the capital budget, we will look at what our needs are, we'll have some discussions about roads and everything else.
Well, I wanna get that out in front so I know where we're going when this happens.
The idea would be to figure out where, you know, go through the discussion of what, where we would need to be, and then we can go back to Kevin and say, hey, give us, you know, three or a six million or a four million or two million dollar scenario.
And how many years, and how many years apart?
And we could even look at like, okay, the first year we only do, you know, let's say the first year we do five and then we do three, three million every other year. So, but this is just conceptually to show you how it works.
Well, that's what I just wanna get to, so when we get to the point, I don't want someone saying, well, you should've said that before we started the meeting.
No.
And I've heard that before, and not only from you, but from other mayors before, you know, I mean, and it's kinda legit, I mean, you give us all this and you want answers and, of course, it's not the easiest thing to do to go through this with tooth and combs, you know, so.
We'll get through it.
And I would say that's kind of the beauty of a plan, right, is it gives you a benchmark that you can adjust to as you get closer to knowing what the actual facts of your decisions are. And so, this is really meant to give you a guidepost as you're having your conversations.
Any other questions about the borrowing? Let me get the concept. All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your attention.
All right, with that being said, we'll start our discussions on the two thousand twenty-six capital projects, capital projects fund budgets. And we're gonna start with Scott. You guys should all have a copy of the packet.
The packet that I handed out in front of you does have a couple changes from what's on your iPads. Small, but the packet that I handed out has a couple of changes.
Where are you gonna start, Scott?
We are going to start with parks. I just wanna make sure, if I have the same one that Jenny has provided me, so that we can go over it. I would say seventy-nine and eighty would be the ones. One other thing I'd like to mention, and these might've been some new changes that Jenny talked about. Alderman Wolf, and usually we put it under parks, you asked for a maintenance for trails, and we didn't get it under parks, but it's a separate capital item. I believe that is on page, I just make sure that I saw it in here. Trail maintenance, that's page forty-eight of two-five-thousand. Just that we didn't forget you, that was just another thing that we usually put under the parks thing. And then, just to let you know, under page forty-nine, I believe you've been talking and Jim came in to dock the Public Works of Safety about a design cost for We Energies Trail. Those are the two that we got in right at the last, this week that I saw, but usually I would put those in our parks, but due to the timing, we just got those in there though. So I wanna make sure, yep.
Three-hundred thousand, we're just looking at engineering costs.
Yes, correct, correct.
Probably be ten percent of that, right?
Yeah.
Plus eighty, twenty grand.
Again, assuming, there's a lot of assumptions, this is just design.
Right, and, and we did talk when I was there with We Energies, as long as we brought this up. It doesn't have to be ten feet wide and different sides and all kinds, so there's a lot of things that can change in there.
Again, what I did is I.
I understand. I'm just bringing this up, just letting people know.
I wanted to let you know though too, I responded directly to We Energies, and I asked them to give me an official email saying what their requirements are, because I need to have.
And you went back to Jim's contact, not the person before, right?
Correct. She's still, by the way, she's still there.
Yeah, but.
She's just on FMLA.
Well, she does just specs. She just throws you, you ask her something, it's like.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I, she is.
That's what I found out when I was there, and I'm not, I'm not, either way on this, it's just that if the money sounds right, it's there, it's a beautiful thing to do. You know, again, I'm like, you know, we have a library, we have to maintain it. We have a trail, we have to maintain it. And, and we have a trail now, and if we can get a better trail out of it and, and get a lot of money back on it, it, it might be worth looking at and bypassing another project for a while or pushing something down the road, or. It's a conversation we all need to have because it, it, it's a great opportunity to get a lot of money and have a great improvement. And, you know, again, I'm not a big trail guy, there's no secret to that, but when it's there, maintenance is a big factor for me. And I've been looking at the trails for the last few days, in the last few years, and I see a lot of activity on them. So this might be, you know, and I've talked to other people and, and like, you know, Jim brought up, a lot of people do try to ride their bikes down there, and I found that the people who do a lot of bike riding have a hard time on that trail, but that's all further discussion we can have, but I just wanna let you guys have a little history of some of the stuff I just investigated it. But it comes down to dollars and cents and how many you agree or disagree, so.
Yep, and, and the maintenance trail, I think Alderman Wolf passed it on next time, and they asked for us doing an attack. So when Ryan and I do Paser rating, we are going to rate all our trails at the same time we do Paser ratings, and it'll be every two years. And we kind of are gonna have a system in there, just, you, you ask for it, so this will be, we had it done once. My predecessor, Dave Simpson, set something up, and this will be our second time that I'll rate them, and then we'll do it every two years, just like everything else.
Well, and if we don't, we're gonna run into the same problem we have with the roads. And some of that could be some of the road money we borrow or whatever, but as, the question I would have for the council is, I just shot, I talked to you or shot you an email, I can't remember, put twenty-five thousand as a holding pattern in there, is that too much? Is that, should we not do it, or should it be more? So that's a question that should come up during conversation when we look at this page.
Yep. Okay. So when you do think of parks, don't forget those two other items, they're just not on the sheet, just for everyone's knowledge.
And what page were we on again, seventy-eight?
Page eighty.
Eighty?
Yeah, and we're just looking at twenty-twenty-six, if that's okay. And I apologize, it's a little small, so.
But the two pages before that.
Yeah, the two pages before, the one before, it's just kinda.
They show the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty.
Eighty breaks it down to every individual item, so that you guys can all look at it, all right? So, let's start with the top there. Baseball Park Arthur Field, turf care, field one, two, and three, four. When we talk about baseball, again, that is just our, our maintenance that we do every other year, that is just for the turf of the, of the field. Any questions with regarding that?
Well, it's, so we're looking in twenty-six for eight-hundred, oh, no, that wrong one, up one, zero, zero, right?
We're at twelve-thousand dollars.
Oh, twelve, oh, the first line?
Are you on page eighty?
Top of page eighty.
Yeah, I was looking for a total dollar that you're going down, okay.
Did you see that one right there?
Yeah, but you don't have a total line for Park Arthor, or for baseball, whatever, right? It's, they're not totaled individually.
The total is twelve-thousand just for next year for field one, two, and three, and four.
Yeah, it's item, but I'm looking for the total of each box, so if you take the whole expenditure schedule that you have darkened, you don't total each box separately. Okay, just so I understand it. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Horn Field, that's our baseball field at Horn, that would be about seven-thousand dollars. Jensen Field, three thou, I'll just go through these. Jensen Field is three thousand, Kerth is forty-five-hundred, Dunune is four thousand. Bloom Field Safety is nine thousand, that is, when we talk about Bloom Field, there's, there's several there in the park. And then Rugby Field, twenty-five, five thousand for soccer and five thousand for football. Now, again, this is a year that we maintain, do a little maintenance of rugby, soccer, and football. It goes every other years, but it's consistent with the baseball, with the mountain baseball games that we play out here and rent, we, full use of the baseball diamonds. Any questions? Pull anything else, just, let's just talk about fields, baseball, rugby, soccer, football. Any questions?
What is it that you're looking to get done at these?
This is just basic safety stuff. Every year we regrade it, top dress it. For the turf fields, we bring a new rubber, we make sure that if there's any seams pulling up, we double-check everything. We still have, also on the turf fields, we still have grass that we need to maintain in the outfield as well. It may be a little fencing, it might be bleachers, it might be a bench, it could be any of those items that we say, that we get the fields to a safe area for the teams can play on it. Does that make sense?
So, the question I have is that, we'll just use Park Arthur for twelve-thousand dollars. What is the revenue that Park Arthur's bringing in to offset that twelve-thousand dollars?
About sixty-five, seventy? We're about sixty-five-thousand dollars.
Sixty-five thousand?
A year.
Okay, so that money's coming out of that to go to, back to Park Arthur?
What we'd use the sixty-five-thousand dollars, and from my understanding, when we put that aside, is for the fact in about ten to fifteen years, depending on how we take care of the turf, we will have to replace the turf. So we have put that money aside so that when we're ready, in ten to fifteen years, I'm hoping we're along the fifteen-year, not the ten-year, because we're doing a really good job of maintaining the fields, that we will be able to replace the turf with that fund set aside.
Okay, and do we have any other funds coming in, sponsors, you know, the leagues or whatever that, locally that, besides the sixty-five thousands, that all included?
That's the four Park Arthur alone, that is the use fees for anybody playing their Warrior Storm, MAA, Focus, they all pay a per-game use fee. That's sixty-five-thousand dollars, includes tournaments and them.
Well, the reason I bring this up is, as you know, you tried it with the schools, and I see it in a lot of fields. You see sponsors on a lot of these fields, and I think with the money we're spending on this, this park, I mean, you know, when we first put it in, we were blindsided by, on how it was put in and redone. You know, just like Moreland Durham going from Jets to Woods, I use that as an example. You know, it didn't last very long, we had to spend millions of dollars to redo that section. We've put a lot of money extra back in the Park Arthur. How can we get some money back out of that, other than being a, a, a high-priced public park? Which I'm in favor of, I mean, don't, don't take me wrong, I'm looking for money down the avenue. We should be looking at some type of sponsorships.
We, we are, I mean, again, I think you see impros on field four.
Well, that's, they, they sponsored half of that field, so that's, that's done already. We're looking for a continuous flow.
Again.
So there is, there is ways that, you know, as we go through this conversation of, you know, trying to bring in more revenue, we could talk to advertising companies, I mean, we don't have staff to go out there and sell advertising, but we could partner with, there's many places out there that do that.
As long as we get money coming in, right?
Right, and that's, I have no objection to that. In the past, some councils didn't like doing that, some do, you know, because.
I don't like doing it, but I think with where we're headed.
I don't have any objection to it, so.
No, no, we are looking at it, MAA sponsored, MAA gave, all donated, all the scoreboards, just to let you know, as well.
Right, but that's gone too, so.
Yeah, you're looking more like the four-by-eight advertising in the outfield or something like that.
Banners, you know, you get a local business, you know, whatever, a thousand dollars a year or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's, we, we looked at some like City Brookfield does, and we can just copy their idea. It's one of the things that we are looking at. Without a doubt, now that they're all online, I, I think you definitely are, we're, we wanna do that, and I think that is one of our, our list of things to do, so.
Well, I, you know, again, I got a lot of nose to spending money on this budget, so we gotta get creative. I mean, you, you know what, you said it, we gotta get creative, and these are ways we gotta get creative and get it out in front of people and make it happen, and, and, you know, we get another ten or twenty thou, I mean, we're, we're pretty much a self-funded recreation division here, which a lot of other places are not, you know, and you know that, I mean, the schools do a lot of stuff with recreations everywhere. And if we wanna keep in the same direction, we gotta find some creative ways to bring more money into the recreation division because Park Arthur is not a cheap park. You know, I mean, we all know that, and, and we wanna keep it. I mean, once you have it, you wanna keep it a beautiful park, let's, let's do everything we can to keep it beautiful other than having taxpayers pay for it.
Yeah, can you just refresh my memory on, you said ten to fifteen years, they have to be redone?
The turf, the turf.
The turf, and how much is that every ten to fifteen years?
It's good.
Ballpark, and I know it's probably different for the bigger field.
So like fields one, two, and three that we paid for in nineteen, we're already on track to replace those in the next five years with what we're bringing in. So we'll get a good ten years with how much use that gets out of, so after five years, that money that we're bringing in, we can start sticking towards what would have to be replaced on field four, which would probably be in the next ten to fifteen years, as Scott said. So we are ahead of the game, but to replace those three fields, you're probably looking at like three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, if they all go at once. No, total.
Total.
For one, two, and three, yes.
Yeah, 'cause that's just a replacement, I mean, putting them in originally is more money.
Yeah, the infrastructure is there, it's pretty much taken off.
When we did this, Deb, I don't remember, was Rick here or not, but we, we set this up for that ten-year maintenance, like that you mentioned, I mean, I was aware of that.
So just to clarify that then, when you have, when comes time that you need that three-fifty, you have that three-fifty already, you have it set aside, we're not gonna see that as another.
We're on pace, we, Tammy, myself, Scott, and, and we, we hope for what we were gonna be in ten years, we're gonna be there almost next year already.
Right, I think we talked about that, we would hit that goal early, hopefully, so.
Yeah, I wanted to just refresh my memory on that, and then the newer one, the bigger one, right, that'll be more.
Yep, that's, yeah, we just started, so, and that's gonna be more square footage, so it'll be more.
Okay.
We're talking ten to twelve years from now.
So basically, about twelve to fifteen thousand a year maintenance, and then every?
Every other year, it's just.
Oh, okay, this is every other year?
Yeah, if we were to replace, say, like the wear areas, batter's boxes, around the pitcher's mound, second, second base where people sign into, this is worst-case scenario. Outside of that, if we don't need to, we don't spend it.
Does this include any maintenance or upkeep on the bathrooms or the parking lot?
Strictly fields.
Yeah, and we have, we have, we have a different account for that, just, just to let you know, so.
That's through our operating.
Operating budget. And if you see how it's projected out for five years, it's twelve, forty-five-hundred, twelve, forty-five-hundred, twelve. So it's like every other, like, this one, we just need a little bit more this year, and then we go back down.
Okay.
Okay? And then all the other fields, just if you have any questions, you know, soccer, rugby, football, those are just every other year for those. And then the other ones are just to get the baseball fields safe, ready to go each year, and then we release them to the teams to play on. Any, any other questions about fields?
Go on.
Okay.
Oh, wait, I do have one. If you, if somebody pays for using it and there's bad weather, do they get their money? How does that work? They get their money back?
If they have reserved it for a game, we reschedule with them. If the game cannot be made up, then it's held in their account in our rec software for them to use it for a future event. But everybody other than one team from New Berlin made up their games this year. We refunded one team that we couldn't get in.
But so potentially, whether, if we had a bad summer, that could be a problem.
Yes, but they can't, on the turfed fields, they can play in the rain.
They can still play, it just wasn't that lightning, yeah.
And they did play one tournament where it rained quite a bit in May.
That doesn't damage the field at all, playing in that kind of, okay.
I think it might damage if we had a storm event like we did too, but that's allows us to, to give us a little leeway for these things.
Okay.
And we are not gonna, if we feel that anything is gonna damage our fields, we will just cancel, just, just to let everyone know. Common sense, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the next one, this is the one that everyone's going to wanna have the discussion about. It's a splash pad. So, it is now the year that the splash pad is up, and what we have done is we have put two numbers in there. So, the eight-hundred-thousand is a splash pad with bathrooms. There are two heated bathrooms to be open year-round and an enclosed mechanical for it, okay? If you don't wanna do the bathrooms, which means that you will have to be sharing the bathrooms over the ones that are existing, you would just put a. over the ones that are existing, you would just put a vault in there, and that would be for five hundred thousand. Both designs account for electricity, water, storm sewer and/or sanitary sewer is needed. Um, discussions need to be held. If you do not add bathrooms throughout the summer, park users, with the current location on the summer playground, playground program, Vets Park is quite crowded with the new playground and summer playground program. A splash pad will definitely increase attendance to that park, without a doubt. It is, I'm letting you know, number one survey in, for our parks. All right, we, we got rid of all the other ones, the dog park and everything. Um, but again, I just presented numbers to you, this is the time that it came up, you as a council can decide what you want to do. All right?
Can I request the lights to go up a little bit?
Yeah.
Thanks. I don't know where the switch is, I can do it myself. I don't know where you control them.
I'm just gonna, um, quickly say, and, um, I just know we have so mu- so much, whoa! That's really, is it closing time?
You guys look better in the dark.
Just my two cents here on the splash pad. I feel like it's definitely a want, it's not a need, and we have so much that we need right now between roads, additional police officers, all kinds of very important. I think government should really stick to safety, public safety, and roads, and personally, I think this is just not something that we need to have in our community right now. That's just my two cents, guys.
Alderman Wolf?
Um, GO borrowing, is that, what does, what does that, what does G O borrowing mean?
General obligation.
Okay, so that's what we're looking at, the splash pad borrowing eight hundred thousand dollars?
If, if, if you guys decide to go forward with it, yes.
This is something, I mean, i- i- it's a great idea, don't get me wrong, it'd be beautiful to have, and people would love it. Again, like I said, it's gonna be a hard time to be a council member this year.
You can also kick it, you can also kick it down, move it back a year.
That's, that's, well, the other question is-
Have this conversation next year, and, you know, say we have a good year with the landfill or something, you know, it, it, it might change your conversation on it.
No, I, it, it is something that definitely needs to be pushed back, I mean, unless you're, you're, you're putting drinking water in the, in the splash pad, then it would be worth it, but, uh, is this the Cadillac splash pad? You know, I mean, there's a lot of questions, once we get to the next level of if we're going to spend the money, I think right now, my opinion, I, I kind of agree with, with Deb, is we can push this down the road, you, you, and it's a great idea. Um, trails are a great idea, you know how I feel about trails, they, um, borrowing right now, eight hundred thousand dollars, I, I, I guess the question would be, and, and we're not on that subject, we're gonna be on that subject, is the police station, the OPD, how much is that going to cost? Do we want to spend our money? Do we want to borrow money? This is something that's been going on for a long time. Um, eight hundred thousand's more than that, I assume. Um, but this is something I like to pull off, and, and myself, you guys can agree or disagree, and, uh, see where we're at, because we're talking, I don't even know what we're talking on this whole budget yet, but I have to look at everything and, and see-
Alderman Hamel?
Where we're at in dollars.
Yeah, I agree, this is more of a want than a need as well, and one thing I don't know is what's going to be the annual maintenance on it, and the additional costs other than the money to install the bathroom in the splash pad, because I would think that would be something.
Yeah, we, we reach out to vendors to get an annual maintenance, I mean, again, like we have annual maintenance with the dog park, anything's going to have an annual maintenance. I'm waiting for the vendor to give me a cost for the annual maintenance, um, but-
Would it require additional staff person because of?
No, no, because it's a splash pad, it would be one where you go, if you see one in Waloto, so you go hit the button, you hit the button, and that's it. Um, there's no additional staff that's needed.
I do think this is something that needs to be pushed out down the road as well, um, especially with how tight the budget is.
I have another question too, is it, um, is there additional insurance needed for a splash pad too? Something that's more liability?
I do not know, um, I, I would have to check with R and R. I, I, I'm sure, guys, with anything that we have, we insure. I, I'm letting you know, like, there is like fifteen pages of documents, every building, every field, we insure it. So I'm assuming we're going to have to have some insurance for it, because if something breaks on it, we then will call our insurance or people in, just, just to let you know. So, I'm gonna say the answer is yes, you're gonna have to have a little bit more insurance, I don't know how much, so.
The, the other question I have is, twenty-twenty-six says eight hundred thousand, twenty-twenty-seven says eight hundred thousand.
No, no, it doesn't.
You're looking at total.
Oh, I'm looking at the borrowing.
You're looking at the, yep.
I'm looking at the, the four oh one on C on page seventy-nine.
Okay, I, I, I'm looking at page eighty, it gives you a little bit better breakdown.
Okay, I, I, okay, so why am I ahead of myself then, just? On the, it's just funny, the numbers are exactly the same for us. I don't know what four oh one is, maybe that's, that's the explanation. So you have another eight hundred thousand you want to borrow for in twenty-seven, and that seems like a lot of money. I, I, what are we, what are we looking at there then?
Well, why don't we go step by step?
Well, we are, we're going on the eight hundred thousand of the borrowing here.
Oh, yeah, but the eight hundred, you guys are deferring that, well, so, it seems like it, we'll, we'll get everyone's discussion, but then the next, the next item is the pickleball courts.
No, next item-
Oh, I'm sorry, no, not the pickleball courts.
It's this yearly maintenance, dog park.
What's that?
The yearly maintenance for the dog park. So I'll go through all these, and then you guys can kind of, but if you look on page eighty, it's going down. Yearly maintenance on the dog park.
So, before we go too far, okay, so, I've heard from three, well, probably four, because you were shaking your head, yes. Um, is everyone, I, I miss, defer or remove? Where are we at on that?
I'm at removing it, but-
What do you guys want to do?
We've been-
Remove it from the five-year capital altogether, which I don't recommend, because, you know, at least you can, you can keep on kicking it down, but I mean, if you guys have no intention of ever doing that, we should probably let the public know that, and that would be removing it.
I don't see us doing it in the next two years, especially with, uh, where we're headed with the road program, for sure.
Well, you could move it two years down, I mean, I, you know-
I say defer.
If we do for that.
We okay with defer?
I agree, kick it down.
Okay.
What's, what's that, Tom?
We'll just, we'll just defer it, we'll put it, we'll push it back, instead of removing it altogether.
What, what year? I can, I can move it to- Twenty-eight? That sounds good, that's not a problem.
No, I just wanted direction before we kept on going.
And then, moving down, the dog park yearly maintenance, it's-
Hey, hey, hang on one second, just, so we're all on the same page, when we do these, and we're gonna pull this out, are we getting new sheets reflecting this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just want-
Yeah, this is our, this is our working exercise.
Try to figure it out.
Yeah, no, this is our working exercise, when you guys approve the, you know, we have our public hearing and everything, you will have documents with all-
And we have a, a key saying that we remove that, so that we can see-
Sure, we can put it in red or something.
We just have a key somewhere saying, hey, we, we pulled off, yeah.
We'll find some way of-
Just highlight, so that we can look at things in the future that we, we might want to bring back, or change, you know?
Sure.
I, I just kind of a running tickler file?
Yeah, it'll still be on there if you, it'll be under twenty-eight, but we, but we're gonna highlight it for you.
I'd like to know what happened this year.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep, all right, back to the dog park, we're, we're doing yearly maintenance of two thousand. And then we have miscellaneous playground replacement equipment, ten thousand, and wood chips for all playgrounds, ten thousand. Those three costs, just to let you know, those are yearly maintenance costs that we have. Um, the next one is the boat ramp, um, for Lake Dune Launch, that's a hundred thirty-five thousand, just to let everyone know. We split that up last year. So, what we did was, we kept about fifteen thousand in twenty-twenty-five, and we're getting a, our sample's being taken right now of sentiment, and then we're working on our permit, and the goal is then in twenty-twenty-six to do the dredging of Lake Dune just by the boat launch, similar to what was done with Box Horn.
And the one thirty-five is just the dredging?
Just the dredging, just think of, like, there's a ton of cactails out there, material, it's just to clear out all that stuff, right there.
So, so that's not by any residence?
What? No, this is the boat launch.
It's our boat launch.
Just around the boat launch.
Just by the boat launch, yep, yep.
And it, that's a hundred thirty-five thousand, just that little area there?
Well, it goes, there's a channel that goes out.
The channel, it's a pretty big area on both sides. If, if you, if you've been down there, go down there, there's, it's very tight to get a boat in and out.
Uh, from what I've heard, that, that launch is pretty much unusable. So there's only one launch on that lake, it's on the south side, and it's owned by the town of Norway.
And we own, we own the launch evidently, right?
Yes, yeah.
At the park, okay. I haven't been over here.
Okay, and then moving on, um, Manchester Park Pavilion needs a new roof for fifteen thousand. And then the picnic tables throughout the parks, we need about fifteen thousand one time for both of those, just to make improvements for that. So, if you look at that, I think I got one million thirty-nine, was that thirty-nine thousand? If you take the eight hundred, you're pretty much only at two thou- two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for that. Now, again, I would like to also bring up the two other items, We Energy Trail, three hundred thousand for the design, that would be for next year, and then the-
Thirty thousand, thirty.
What?
The We Energies Trail, the only, I mean, I would, you guys do what you want with it, but my, my recommendation on that is we apply for the grant, if we get the grant, then we do the engineering, but if we don't get the grant, we don't do it. But that's up to you guys, but.
And, and, I, not that, Jim seems to be a pretty good expert on this, with former life and stuff, I, I, a- and, and that's all feasible, you've talked to him about-
Well, he's the one that claims that there's all this money out there for it, so we'll apply for it.
That's what I mean.
But I put, I put it in the capital contingent of getting the grant. If we don't get it, I don't want to do it.
I just so understand the grant is probably going to be like forty on the high side, thirty, but it's an eighty, twenty, uh, for the, for the survey, I mean, so we'll have to pay twenty percent, so if it's, say it's forty on the high side, we'd have to pay eight thousand to see if it's worth our time to spend. You said three hundred, but it could be more, right? Depending on how we do it, but you were going with the old traffic highway standards.
Yeah, and again, and just to let you know, it could still be, I'm waiting for my direct email from the We Energies, and again, we are applying for grants, we are, that means we are competing with everyone else, it, nothing is guaranteed. I think where we might be at a disadvantage is some other places are going for new trails. This is not a new trail, we're repaving an existing trail, okay? When you go for a new trail, those kind of may be your checkoff points of a little bit better scoring, just to let you know, okay? We compete with everyone in the sewer pack area, which is me, City Milwaukee, Milwaukee County.
So when we get to that point of talking about the actual trail, that is consideration, you guys, I mean, we, let's just decide, we apply for a grant and simple numbers that say it's five hundred thousand dollars, do you want to take the five hundred thousand dollars and pave an existing trail that may not be the best trail in the world, but it's a trail? Or take that five hundred thousand dollars and add a trail to like, say Martin Driver, people have been asking for, or other areas, and put it, or, and put a trail where there has been requests for some, that we don't have one, so that's, you know, where do you want to allocate your funds?
But you gotta remember, and, and again, I'm not advocating either way, it's just, I, I'm involved in trying to bring you the numbers, because it seems like a good idea. Um, it's an eighty, twenty split if we get the grant, so if the trail's five hundred thousand, it's gonna be a hundred thousand, we can't put a trail in for a hundred thousand anywhere. So, that's a real big consideration to look at, um, for our community. Um, i- i- if we're gonna do this, the time would be now with what's available if we qualify. That's the only reason I'm involved with this, is, is, it, it's just timing.
Okay.
Any, any other things on page eighty?
Uh, the tennis court and pickleball, we didn't talk about that, is that being skipped?
That is in twenty-twenty-seven.
Oh, okay, so it's next year.
I'm happy to talk about that, so, just to let you know, um, we had a higher number before. Um, that was when we were doing a sixteen-court facility, we're, we moved it down to twelve, and the, the pickleball group wants to donate about three hundred thousand dollars, and where our location, what we're doing is, would be looking at Moreland, and when you come in, you have the skate park, and you drive south into Moreland Park, you have the dog park, and would be on the east side of the Moreland area, we have other places to put the soccer field, and we feel by doing only a twelve, um, complex, you don't need a new, a new parking lot, we can share the parking lot that we have there already, which is a pretty good size.
And there's bathrooms there?
Um, no, we do not have bathrooms, we have porta-johns.
Well, I was told by the pickleball people that they don't want anything unless it has bathrooms. I've given, volunteered some information on other parks that we can use.
In twenty-twenty-seven, we also have a pavilion in, for Moreland with bathrooms, just to let you know. That's on there, it's been on there for a, a couple of years now, so.
And it probably will be.
Yeah.
Um, as long as we're talking pickleball, even though we're moving it next year, three hundred off the seven fifty would be our four fifty, is that what you're telling me?
That would be correct.
And originally it was five hundred, and they're gonna come up with two fifty, it'd be down to two fifties.
No, no, originally it was, originally was-
Well, when we were sure talking, I remember exactly what you said here.
It was a million, actually it was a million bucks.
It was, they were coming up with five hundred originally.
Yeah, it was a million dollars for sixteen court, it moved down to seven fifty because it's only twelve, and they were gonna come up with five hundred thousand.
Have we, a- and I know the schools were talking about doing something with pickleball, where's this going with the schools?
The pickleball, um, group is not interested in going that direction, so, it was just something floated in.
And because, is there a major reason?
They have, they have three hundred thousand dollars of their money that they don't want to put towards that, so.
Have we investigated having a private group come in and, and put a pickleball, uh, facility in? I mean, everybody's starting to put private facilities in for pick, pickleball, and even in different states.
Yeah, I, why are we paying for pickleball? It's just-
I- i- if someone would want to come in, and from a business development, would want to take a building and put pickleball in there, and it goes through the plant commission and everything, and you guys approve it, then that would be an indoor pickleball court that's done like in Brookfield or anyone else. But no one has come to put in a private pickleball court yet.
Have we reached out to anybody? I mean, do, we don't have a CDA anymore, right?
We, we have one in name, but no.
I mean, that, that used to try to bring people in for like, stuff like this, and-
No, they didn't, they just, they reacted similar to the plant commission.
Well, they, they reached out at times, and then, uh, for certain subjects.
I, I am sure if, if a private pickleball company thinks that there is value putting something in Meskego, they will reach out to us.
Well, weren't we once the biggest pickleball thing in the area?
I don't play, I don't know.
That's how other communities started going, yeah, we were one of the first ones out there.
We, we have the leader of the group in the audience that's kind of laughing, but I don't know, what do you do, I?
I, I, I don't know, I mean, you know, i- i- Okay, I, I'm just looking at pure dollar values here, it, you know, they don't want the school, the school is, is interesting, interested in it. Um, this is, this is a lot of money, you know, not that I, I don't like it, or I, I don't approve of it, it's just, I'm looking at pure dollars and where we're going, and how far down the road it's gonna be.
Let's, it's not till twenty-twenty-seven, let's just move to the next thing.
If I may just add a couple of things on the questions you're bringing up for pickleball. It's a huge revenue generator for our department. This year alone, we're close to forty thousand dollars that we generate on the program. So, we bring a private pickleball group in, we lose that forty thousand for our department.
A tax, tax base from them.
What's that?
We get a tax base, your forty thousand in, in ten years doesn't even pay for the pickleball park that we pay for.
Forty thousand each year.
Right.
If we increase the footprint on it, it will grow.
And maintenance.
Yeah, and there's maintenance and upkeep and-
There's not much, we actually haven't put much money into Lions Park at all. I mean, we, we increased, we, we had to replace the one last year, just because it was unsafe, but, you know, that was, I think twenty-five thousand.
I mean, we took out at the parks two tennis courts.
Yep. This is a fast-growing sport, um, we are lacking on having to expand it from our surrounding communities. And I'll back up to the reasoning why the pickleball group doesn't want to go with the school district. Mainly, it's just a multi-use factor, outdoor facilities, um, tennis, pickleball, they're not combining facilities anymore, you're seeing them go away from each other on that, just because of how fast it's growing. Um, and I think the tennis programs would, would say the same as well.
Okay, well, it's next year, I just-
Alderman Hamel?
I got a, speaking of the schools, I got a call from constituent that, um, was completely against converting the tennis courts into pickleball courts, just due to the factor, the lines don't match up. Um, their kids played tennis at the school, so they had a self-interest in it. But from talking to him, there was a lot of people at the school that did not want to pursue that route, and then I also got a call from a pickleballer that-
Didn't want it either.
Didn't want it either at the school, because they didn't know what their hours are, and they were, you know, are we going to be able to use it when we want to use it?
So, a lot of those concerns from both sides were just guessing on things, and they weren't necessarily true. The line thing, all that was, they, there was a accommodation for almost everything you're talking about. It just, it, it came down to logistics and, um, some concerns about, yes, it may work today, but what happens if also the school board, you know, two years from now says, we don't want, we don't want anyone on the grounds- but what happens if also the school board, you know, two years from now says, we don't want, we don't want anyone on the grounds uh, during the school day. Right now, they said it's okay, but what if they change their mind? What if some other tragedy happens and we have to change our whole approach to everything? There is just too many wild cards that they're, they're, they just thought it'd be more prudent for them to wait and try to do something cooperatively with us versus doing something cooperatively with the school district.
I did also get a concern from a, somebody that lives in the condos across from Moreland Park about the noise and the traffic and everything else. So that'll need to be addressed too, I think, if there's going to be a problem. And I don't know how much noise it makes.
No, noise mitigation, a- again, um, but again, it's not for twenty twenty-six, so.
Before we get in this huge debate about something, we can save this argument for next year.
Is there anything else on the parks besides switching that eight hundred thousand dollars for the splash pad to twenty twenty-eight? And again, you, you still all get to vote on this again, but this is-
This isn't your final vote, this is just so we have the proper documents made for you to vote on. Okay? Next?
Um, while we're in there, I'd like to go to page forty-eight and do trail maintenance right away. Just kind of- Any comments, good, no good, you want to debate this?
Ryan, what would this all entail?
As Scott mentioned before, after we go out, we're gonna go out, uh, end of September, early October, do our PISA rating. We rate the roads, we're gonna do the same thing with the trails. At that point, um, we would come up with a program just to see what we can do, come out, replace. I can give you an example, um, which is pretty rough at the moment, just passing every day. Not because I go there, I drive past there, it's right in front of Starbucks. There is a section that I don't even think is really multiple by a wheelchair anymore, it's a truncated dome. We have some curb stops in there, and the trail itself, when it's put in by whoever developed that corner, is extremely rough, to the point where it's hard for us to do the snow clearing there. So you have a section where we would go maybe trail width eight, or some are six, they all vary. Trail width, eight by, say, fifty. And we, then I would approach a company and say, hey, you know, give me bids on these spots. And we would either wrap it into a road program, using that fund so we can get a better cost for it, or do it outside of that. So it'd be the same situation, we go through in a zero to ten situation, then come in. Also, whenever the crack sealers come in, there's gonna be some areas that the structure of the trail is still good, but we're getting some wider cracks all the way down to surface or base layer. Come in there and have them crack seal it, that trail is at a five or six, that's gonna be at a five or six or seven for next ten years, because you don't have the vehicle traffic on it, you have pedestrians, bikes. The only traffic you get in is our small equipment when we're clearing snow.
Can I make a recommendation that, you know, this, not against having this in there, but it, it didn't follow our normal process, it was a request, we just put it in. Ryan, Ryan and Scott are gonna go do, do some ratings of these. Can we throw this to the end, like, and bring it back once we know what shape our trails are in? And talk about this later on, because who knows?
We should have our rating done by our October meeting, so.
Yeah, I, so before we have to approve this anyway, why don't we just wait till they come back with a report, see what needs to be done? We can actually put a real number in there and, and look what our, our thing is.
We can get cost estimates, for sure.
And then we as a staff can get together and make a plan of how we would do this, Mel, like, I-
Yeah, I just wanted to get something, sorry.
No, I, I agree, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying, I, I don't, having this discussion on it tonight without knowing where we're at doesn't make a lot of sense.
I said it was just a twenty-five thousand, I just asked for something to be put in there.
No, no, no offense on that.
That might be high, it might be low.
And, and rolling it, and ma- and it makes the most sense rolling this in with our road program because of the, the, the scales of economy that we would have.
But I do want it separate line item, yeah.
But, but when we bid it, we should bid it with that, so, you know, that type of thing.
We can put it on a road project as an alternative.
Right.
So we get the best prices, and at that point-
Yeah.
Alderman Hamel?
However you guys do it, you know?
I agree with what, um, the mayor's saying, but I want to thank you, Ryan, for going out and fixing that one spot that I-
I don't want it to fall down.
Oh, it hurt going over it. But my question is, is how will you go out and rate these? Because that one spot, it was bad on the trail, but from the road, you really couldn't see that.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to like, stop and walk, and we have, so-
E-bikes.
E, back in the day, we took all these shot, the shots were done of where we knew where bad areas were. So again, we have a, actually have an existing map of all these where the spots are. So we'll start with these different spots. The other thing too is, we'll also talk with our guys who do snowplow. It's like a snowplow route, they, we snowplow the trails. Whoever does it, okay, on that trail, what have you noticed?
What, an ivory bumper, whatever.
Yes, a- a- again, i- I mean, it's kind of logical. I mean, we break it down by snowplow routes, we'll break it down by snowplowing of the trails, you know? And that's where we look at everything from there.
But we have golf carts and things like that, that we can physically see.
There's also some areas, you know, that have low hanging branches, and they have apples on them.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I'm not sure who's responsible for keeping those trimmed, if it's a homeowner, if it's-
The We Energies Trail is typically on ATC, which is their situation. But we, we go out and handle everything just because the response time is there. So it's usually a spring-fall thing for us.
Okay.
Spring, we go through, trim it back. Obviously, we're complaint-driven too, so.
Yeah, because I know there's one along, uh, test corners with some low hanging ones, and, uh-
On St. Paul's?
Yeah, um, and also on, uh, like North Cape, there's a whole bunch of them out there that- You have to make sure you're ducking as you're coming up to them.
Okay.
Hey, just, just take Bob's request and-
Alderman Schrader?
I know, um, the mayor said we're pushing this back. I just, my two sons and the whole thing with trails. I grew up in a community in Greendale where they had sidewalks. I think trails are great because of the kids, and everybody can use the trails. It's not just for people who like pickleball or people who want a splash pad. Trails, everybody can use, the whole family, old, young, everybody. So I think trails is a good investment that everybody can use. You don't necessarily need any special equipment or special training. And it's, and it's, goes back to a safety issue too, I feel like, because there is a lot of, not a lot of great places to walk for kids and families, so.
Alderman Dilge?
Um, so a bunch of, as we were going through the park stuff, a bunch of items were every other year, just normal maintenance, thousand, twenty-five hundred, whatever it was. Do we not ha- I mean, trails have been in for a while, do we not have like, something like that for just trail repair every year, or should we?
Yeah, we should.
Have a dollar amount to set aside? I mean, there's gotta be a way we can figure out like-
Okay, so what we're doing is rating, once we did the rating, and then we're gonna come, come up and create something very similar to what you just said. So we're, we're about, give me three, four months away, and then we will have something. But that's, it's gonna be similar to a road program, you know? We'll, we'll figure out something that to do. It just won't be as costly, and it'll be less maintenance, because when you're only doing pedestrians or small equipment, it, it damages less than a road, so.
We haven't had to do any major trail repairs. If that's where you're going with it, right now, if like, the spots that Alderman Hamel brought up on Durham Drive, that is just my guys cutting and replacing certain areas that comes out of just our general operating budget.
I know, I know the guy, um, it was a couple meetings ago, the guy that was in here talking about, um, maybe the trail, trail along Woods Road, and now that they're putting those houses in there and those big culverts, and the, the ramps going up and down the, um, to go over the driveways and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
I know, uh, like, some of the manhole covers that might show up, there's big lips there too, so.
And there's, there's spots too that, that my guys go out before we have to clear, that our snowplowing equipment grabs that, and we'll either wreck it or wreck them. So that's something we have to go through every fall.
All right, we good with the trail, pushing it off? All right.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna do a eight-minute potty break, who's been requested, so we're gonna go and recess for eight minutes.
Okay. So we are going to start with sanitary sewer, and there'll be a page sixty-eight. And it should say force main as a project name. Everyone find it, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. You got it? Okay, so we requested last year, and it was gonna be done in, the design in twenty-seven, and then the construction in twenty-eight. But due to the fact that the landfill is growing, um, we need to put in a new six-inch force main for Emerald Park landfill, and to, that's to the Ryan Creek Interceptor. It will be approximately eleven hundred linear feet of pipe. Um, the cost estimates, um, include lift station upgrades, electric pump upgrades, design and construction. If you guys did the last landfill tour, the, the new cell is open, and they are already beginning to make plans and its feasibility study to add the next kind of, uh, growth of that landfill. What this is, is they get leachate. And we are at our, we have a four-inch, um, force main, and with our pumps and everything, we have upgraded everything possible, we, we, we're at, at our full capacity right now, so. Any other discussions or anything that you guys want to know about?
Questions, comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a question.
Sure.
Um, we approved this landfill a long time ago to, for the expansion, or what? I mean, how does, how does that work?
The, the expansion, that is with the DNR. So it's under, it's at the DNR right now for feasibility study for it. So they're moving forward for the next expansion, which I think will give them the next twenty, twenty-five years.
Okay, so we have to follow what the DNR does? That, DNR has no funds available for us to do any of this? The landfill people have no money for us, they just, here, we're gonna move forward, and you take all the costs on this?
So if you think about it, when they pay their rec charges, and probably when I started, they got a pretty hefty rec charge. Um, that's why we collect rec charges for people. This, remember, when we do rec charges, these help offset some of our big capital costs. And that's why it's important, we, we charge the correct amount for rec charges, so.
Yeah, but that, that money's gone, right? So this is all new?
No, 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 no.
No.
We're gonna use the money out of rec charges for this?
Well, it's working, yeah, essentially, it's working capital.
That's where we get it from?
Yeah, yeah, yes, that's, that's why we get rec charges.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't know what the balance is, but we, we, we have three hundred and sixty thousand in there to cover this?
I, I think, didn't you say it was about thirteen million dollars in our sanitary sewer? Yeah, that's what I believe I heard from, um, today, Baker Tilly.
Oh, okay.
Is that correct? About, about thirteen point, I, I'm, I'm guessing, but I remember about thirteen point four million, is what you said.
I thought we were having to come up with the money on this, I didn't realize that we had money put aside for this, so.
Well, well, that's why we do rec charges, that's why the system's set up for that.
Well, it's good that all of us know that, because I bet nobody knew that, that where this money was coming from, right? Anybody awake?
In, in regards to rec charges, if you increase the size of that pipe, they're gonna be able to dump more into the sewer system.
Correct, so every year-
Which your rec charge would go up.
Well, it all depends, so they also have a holding tank.
Capacity, right?
They, they have a holding tank. Okay.
But we charge per, per acreage too, don't we, or the size of it?
It's, it's based off of flow, okay? For landfill, it's based off of flow. Uh, every year-
Maximum flow.
Ma- yep, there, there's, every year, Tim pulls all the numbers, I do the calculation, I give it to Colleen, and based off of that, it all depends on whether or not they need more rec charges. What they have found, as landfill, they also built a holding tank out there. What they do is they control their leachate, they understand the, the-
The cost.
What's going on. They also have upgraded some of their systems, when they give us stuff, that they don't give it all in one load, they're able now to chew it in a little bit more of a gradual, because they've updated some of their VFDs out there. So they know, understand what's going on, and they know, as they grow, and you have more surface area, you're gonna get more leachate, okay? So we, we know, they know, everyone knows how to play this game of, of whether or not they charge more rec charges.
Well, their holding tank also allows them to take-
Yes.
Liquid waste as well.
Yeah, but they have not taken liquid waste.
I know they're not right now, but it does allow them to if they choose to.
Yeah.
So where does this drain to?
Again-
MMSD.
This would go to Ryan Creek Interceptor, and the Ryan Creek Interceptor goes down to MMSD. I believe that is the South Shore Plant, it doesn't go to Jones Island.
Okay.
Okay? Any, any other questions? And, and the only person, if I'm right, is the landfill that's on this, correct? There's no other companies or businesses, this is strictly just the landfill.
Okay. Next?
Moving on, page sixty-nine. Um, again, this is, uh, maintenance for manholes, sanitary sewer manhole rehab. So we spaced it out, um, for three years to replace five manholes each time. What's happening, H2S, it's, it's the stuff that comes and it starts eating away on the inside of the manholes. It's, it's a byproduct. Um, H2S comes a lot from like, the leachate, that's why it epoxies all the, the Ryan Creek Interceptor. This H2S is corroding and breaking down our manholes. So we have fifteen of these that we have to do in the next three years. So we spaced it out, just five each, each year to do it, so.
Questions? Go ahead.
Is, is there a different, just a thought? Is there a different, um, product that could be used for the manholes that would last longer with that type of?
I talked to probably three different companies already. A lot of these manholes Scott was talking about is our lift stations, the force mains they pump into them. It's that manhole and a manhole before that gets all hydrogen sulfide. Our benches are decaying away, there's, you can see rebar in the, in the concrete. So they gave me two, I had three different companies come out, they gave me some quotes on it. Obviously, if you want the twenty-year warranty or pay more, we haven't decided which way we're gonna go yet. Um, there's a, there's some ticious, some companies use some ticious material, some use like a foam epoxy. Um, I don't know which one we're gonna go with yet, but we're just, we, we did it probably twenty years ago, um, in Alderman Whiff's area, over by Suttle or, uh, Freedom Acres and all that. We did a whole bunch of manholes in that area, so we haven't did it probably for twenty years. And when we do manhole inspections, that's when we find these. And these are the most critical ones. Is there a lot more we could do? Yeah, but we're gonna take the fifteen that we have and take care of them first.
Is it real labor-intensive to do? I would think so, so maybe if it's, maybe it'd be wiser to spend some more and get a better one that you don't have to do as often, is just my two cents?
Yeah, and, and we'll look at that, we don't, you know, again, you go into it, it's close, you know, confined, you have to go in there, you have to have three or four guys to go in there.
It's a confined space, so when we go in a confined space, we have four guys. You have to have four guys because you can't control the sewer coming in. So when these companies come in and do it, they're supposed to follow our rules when they, when they enter our manholes. They have their own tripod, gas monitor, everything like that. So I mean, the companies I, I looked at are pretty reputable companies, and they obviously would follow what we would make them go through, so. Yes, if we had more, maybe it'd be a little cheaper, I'm not sure.
And, and remember, as we do this maintenance stuff, this allows us, when we do our reports to the DNR, we need to be in compliance with our reports. That's, that's the goal here. Goal is for us as a city to be compliant with all the standards that we need to hold house so that we get with the Wisconsin DNR. That's, that's ultimate goal, why we're doing these things, just to let you know, so. Okay, moving on, um, the next thing is page seventy. And for the next three years, we need to upgrade our skater rated network system. What this is, and these sites are lift station, water towers, wells, and this will between water, sewer, and utility. If you ever go into Tim's office, and you start hearing all these alarms, we have a computer that is set up to every one of our wells. This is where we get alarms, you know? If lift station alarms, well alarms, anything like that, our system needs to be finally upgraded. So we're looking at doing this for the next, uh, three years, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And again, there's sixteen, eighteen, eighteen, and you'll see the same costs with water, we split, we split on it. You know how that, that goes. But these are the ones that give us our alarms that then we go check out. So it's kind of important for us to make sure our skater system is, is up to date.
Was, was this accelerated or exacerbated at all by the water?
No, no, I think I had this on there last year.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just time.
Time, yeah.
A lot of the radios we replaced, we take, I take it out of operating, like, if they fail, um, R and M, they do all of our skater controls. If they fail, we just take it out of operating. And now we look through, we have over fifty-one radios in the system, including all the water towers, lift stations, wells, everything. So there's a lot to replace. We had, we replace them when they fail. You know, electronics, everything's updated, whatnot. So now we're trying to get ahead of the game and, and, and get into these and replace them, so. There's a lot, I mean, you've been, I mean, you've seen what it's like.
Yeah, I was on the tour, I know, it's pretty intense.
Yeah, is this the newest technology? Are these antennas, or what are these?
We have antennas now, so right now, everything, our skater system calls out frequently, all the time. Our high priority stations, it calls out more, like McShane Lift Station, Woods Road, our high priority stations, always calling. So there's radios that go back, they bounce off the tower in industrial park. So there's radios that go back, they bounce off the tower in industrial park, the water tower, and then we have a repeater at the booster station on Hillendale. So they're always calling. So we've had radios and antennas in for 15, 20 years.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So what's the next generation? Are we looking at replacing somebody's with the next generation?
Well, some communities are going through the internet and trying to, but it'd be impossible for us to do it. So I don't know how that would work to run fiber to all these stations.
We're not fiber, yeah.
We, it wouldn't even be, it wouldn't be an option for us, the way we're so spread apart with everything. But some communities are doing that.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what's available. I mean, I'm in the utility business and I, I do electric and there's all kinds of new technology getting away from some of these frequencies and antennas and things like that, that, um, it's just much better systems.
They're just using different bandwidth. I mean, so it's still an antenna, it just might not have, it all travels through the air. You code hardwire them, like he said, however.
Yeah, you don't want to hardwire them.
You don't want to hardwire them.
No, Bluetooth, yeah.
Well, it's problems with flooding and everything else where now you're taking, taking out the hardwire system.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're heading into, you know, that all of a sudden you're going to come to us in three years and say, oh, technology's changing and these are old and they're not supported anymore, so we're all, you know, I'm just bringing it up as conversation.
And we don't have, I mean, valid point, you know, we don't have control over software. As long as the software works, we'll continue using it. You know, like one, our 911 dispatch consoles right now are running on, we're still using them, but we need to replace them because they're, they're working on, on, on Windows 7, so.
Right.
If it dies, there's no replacement. So we don't have control over that part of it when they upgrade the software and don't, and don't give other options for it. So we do our best to try to.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, just to, just to check where we're headed in the future.
I mean, we, we always look at the latest technology and see what's, what's going on, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it's, when you divide it, times it by two, it starts adding up real quick.
It, it's one, it's very important though. This is, this is a one that you, we need to have. Does that make sense? So.
No, I understand this concept, yeah.
Um, page 71, this is our private property, INI from MMSD. So again, we did the west side of Little Muskego Lake, then we just finished the east side of Little Muskego Lake. This would be our third kind of work plan area. So Jensen Lift Station is also the A-Gate Lift Station I was talking about. It was already planned for before anything happened with the flooding, just to let you know. It's just the next area that we found that has some of the older homes. And again, this is private property. So this is replacing the sanitary laterals on the private property. We pay this money through our utility rate to MMSD. They set that funds aside and then we use these funds. If we don't use the funds, they will give it to another community, just to let you know, so.
Do you have to get cooperation from the homeowners then?
Oh, yeah.
That's the struggle, right?
Oh, this is a process. And what we found is very successful is in most communities, they want them to kick in, we take care of it all. Because we want, our goal is to be, if you have a street, we want to have 90, 90% of those people to sign up. We do turn down people, okay? If it's too hard, if that pipe is underneath a driveway, it's under a foundation and it's too much of a risk, we won't, we won't do it, just, just to let you know. And it's far and few between, but it makes sense. And, and we're behind at MMSD. We don't want to take that risk of like, okay, I'm just having your house settled for replacing a lateral. We won't, we won't do that, so.
How long do we have this money for? Because I see it's, it's out to 2029. We have it as long as we're using it.
Every year, every year.
As long as we're using it.
They have this program, okay?
Yeah, I know the program, I understand.
And we get also competitive funds. The last couple of years, as we do this, I think both work plans, we have asked and we have received competitive funds to make sure that we can handle everything. So as long as we keep doing this and we keep following a work plan and MMSD likes what, what we're doing, we, we will be have a chance to get competitive funds, so.
Do we, do we give the people an opportunity that you said are difficult to do, that if they open up certain areas, we'll, we'll do it? Like if it's under the driveway, if they want to cut the driveway and get it ready for you guys?
We work with them, we work with them as best they can.
Okay, we don't just turn them down then?
We give them multiple opportunities. And usually what it is, is everyone signs up that wants to sign up and we give them multiple times. It's just when we start doing investigation and find out where that lateral really is, again, we know everything from the right of way in, from the right of way to their house, we don't have any documents. So once we start cameraing and looking at it, then we make calls in the field. And again, everyone's aware of this ahead of time. And we do a very thorough job of signing documents, signing us, looking at it.
Yeah, I understand. I just want to know about the people who are turning down. So you give them an opportunity to spend some of their money to, to make it 100%.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
One question.
Yeah.
Is this the same Jensen Lift Station you talked about earlier?
Yes, I did.
Under five feet of water. Don't know why it's working anymore, but it is.
But it is, yeah.
All right, so this is an additional 250,000 that's being thrown at that.
So this is to replace the pipes that are on private property from their house to the main.
Yeah.
But this, all the, all the sewage feeds into that lift station we're talking about.
So think about this, when you have a lift station and you have sewer, you don't want INI. You don't want stormwater coming from someone's house to get into it. If it comes in and we start filling it, then we have this thing like MMSD combined sewer. We just want our sewer in there. So whatever we can do to eliminate stormwater coming into our sanitary sewer, this is what we're going to do. And they have found, MMSD, that a lot of the laterals that are on private property, especially the lake ones where they could be potentially clay, old, there's cracks in them, we do not want to have the cracks. We want to make sure there's no stormwater coming in there. And that should help out hopefully our lift station by taking some of that pressure off it.
Do you, do you guys do all the work or do you outsource?
All, all this is, we hire contractors.
Okay, so you guys don't have, you do the.
We camera everything.
You camera everything, you lay it out and then you outsource.
Like Jensen Lift Station, there's 473 houses that are just in this basin, right? So we've been in there, two years ago, we're trying to stay ahead of the game. And like Scott said, we're after clay, clay laterals. That's, they're the ones that are going to leak before any PVC. So this started way before, but like Scott said, we did Bay Shore, then we jumped over to Shubring Lake Drive, we did that in '24. We partnered in October and then the other part just last spring, we just finished that up. So Jensen's been in there, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to concentrate around a lake where we know we have potential for a lot of infiltration coming into our sanitary, so. Which, there's more clay around different areas, but we're just strictly concentrating on Little, around Little Muskego. So yes, MJ, they award, they got the award for the last two times, three times now. Well, we go out, we camera it, our main, they try to find the leaks, we show them, this is what's leaking. Uh, and then they come in, they push camera everything. They go in people's houses that are elect to, to get in this, to get their ladders replaced, and they take a push camera, go all the way up to our water, up to our sewer main, so. There's a lot of investigation. We do a lot of it and then it's contracted.
We create it, it's all work, it's all publicly bid. The only contractors that can use it or can do that are approved by MMSD. They have their hands into it as, as much as everything. I mean, again, there's a lot of people watching this, but it's all publicly bid, it's all like documented, everything like that. And then at the end, we pay for it upfront. I do all the expense reports and then it, it has come pretty quickly. So we, we're reimbursed for everything that we do, so. Okay?
Yep.
Moving on, page 72. This is our truck, the five years for the truck that we were, we're doing. In 2026, we're doing a three, four ton pickup truck with utility body, 90,000. Now, Alderman Wolf, you asked again, at the bottom, truck going on, Wisconsin Zerplus, that's a Ford F-150, year is 2013, mileage is 89,956. Now again, that was when the time I turned this in to Jenny, so I'm assuming those numbers are going to be higher and stuff like that, so. We, we always split the trucks between sewer and water. So you'll see this exactly identical kind of request on, on water. And it's, we try to lay out all the other trucks that, why we need them and the years and what type of trucks for you. And now we're going to keep doing the, and what we do is Wisconsin Zerplus, it works really good for us, just put the old trucks on there, so. Any questions? If not, we're moving over to the one and 73, lift station upgrades. So this one we need to have a, a talk about. So McShane, is that our biggest one? McShane is our biggest lift station, okay? So I don't know, I think a couple of you guys have been out there, you kind of see it. A couple of years ago, back in 2025, we asked for 150,000. There's two things that we need to line, and this is where this corrosion, this H2S that we were talking about, that's just eating away. There's a pipe and then there is a vault, okay? Two vaults. And the vault, we, we had money in last year to do it. And they said, hey, if you're going to do it, you need to do the pipe at the same time. They didn't want to go and do the vault, they want to do the pipe and then work its way out and do the vault. So we just rolled that over. However, the real problem and why the cost is $550,000, it's the bypassing. That takes two-thirds of our, our city is through that. In order to make sure that we do this, is going to be probably in July, when there's as much little rain as possible and that we are able to bypass this. But most of the cost is not actually doing the work, it's bypassing the sewage. Just, just, I want to like make sure everyone knows and aware. We looked at replacing the pipe and proximity to the building, it will not be possible, correct?
Right, so it was a 42-inch pipe that we cameraed. It's everything, there's an old lift station that used to be down by McShane. So we cameraed it, we had visual sewer come out and cameraed. We know there's a tier, and I know we talked about this a couple of years ago already. The vault is, you can see the rod coming through the concrete already, so we know there's an issue, right? We don't know how long it's going to last, but if something would happen to this, this is, the, everything comes through here besides the south end of the city. If something happened to this lift station, we would, I mean, it wouldn't, it'd be worse than what we just went through, obviously.
This is our deep tunnel system.
Yeah.
How, how long is it going to be shut down for, do you think?
It won't be shut down, but they have to do a lot of bypassing, so.
It won't even shut down at all.
No, but you got to understand, you got to take that sewage, pump it around.
Right, right.
To, to the next one. And again, if it takes two-thirds of the city.
But it's better than a shutdown, though.
It is, and the one that you, why you need to be cognizant of this is if there is a failure, the capacity ends up in your constituents' basement in that area, so.
I got a generator. Uh, so the lining of the pipe is like totally in 90 feet. So there's not a lot, but it's, it's a big line. And then the vault, there's two vaults that we have to, in a junction chamber, that has to be epoxied. So they need a certain amount of dry time. It's, like Scott said, the biggest thing is bypassing. You can't, we thought about doing it in sections, just do lining and then do that, but it wouldn't make sense because you have to come back out and bypass, bypass once. Once the bypass is set up, just do it all at once and then we're done.
I'm sorry, are we oversizing the pipes then?
No, 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 just lining the pipes.
Just lining, not, oh, okay.
And maybe, maybe we have to like, this is just to repair everything. We're now replacing it, it's, it's beginning to eat away.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, this is all work that's inside, down below the ground. So again, this is, this is one that like, this is definitely one that we have to do.
Yeah, and how long does that lining last? Is this something that you're going to have to do in 10 years now again, or how does that?
We haven't got an actual like bid on it, like how long is it going to last? I like, what I said before, the 15-year warranty with just a manhole rehab stuff that we're talking about, that's a 15-year warranty. I don't know how long this is going to last with this lining. It hasn't been touched since that was put in.
Yeah, we haven't, like, this hasn't been done since.
This was put in in 2000, 2003, I believe?
Uh, the pipes have been in since 84.
Okay, so the list, or the, the vault or the, the tank itself.
That's a whole different, the 1.7 million gallon storage tank, that is totally fine, has nothing to do with any of that. This is right down the road at McShane Lift Station where everything feeds to.
So to mitigate some of that bypass, can you pump the 1.7 million down to nothing to give you some capacity?
We can use the tank. We can also bypass into the lift station itself. So the pipe comes into it, so there's, I know there's a portion, we talked to a couple of different contractors a while ago, they said we could still pump it into the lift station, so we could still utilize the lift station or.
You're just skip, you're just skipping the pipes between the two.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
The next one here is our lift station upgrades, 2026, upgrade the obsolete, obsolete SLLC 505 master SCADA and the critical lift station. Do you want to just talk a little bit about that one that we were doing?
Here.
I think, here.
So right now, 2025 is done. That's down by the storage tank that we were talking about, that's all done. And then, uh, let's see here, oh, the SCADA, so that SCADA system is in my office, so that needs to be upgraded as well. That's part of that, that's part of that too, so, uh, let me see here. Yeah, you got to.
Yeah, but that's 2026, we're going to do the upgrade for there for 65,000 there, yeah. That's not lift station, this is the next one, the PV. Tim, the next one. Yeah, yeah. This is that new one that you gave me. There, that one. Yep.
All right. So yeah, the upgrade, that mast, that's the master one control at McShane Lift Station. So again, that's the, everything upgrading, the controls down there. So basically, at the tank, so we have the controls at the tank, so we're going to convert everything down to McShane Lift Station.
Yep, page 74. Any questions about that? Okay. Moving on to 75, just to let you know, that's for 2027. I think why that is important, you'll see that for a lot of things and utilities and our handheld radios will be obsolete in 2027. So just kind of giving you a fair warning for that, that, but moving on to page 76.
Hang on, Scott, I have a question on.
Which one?
Radios, again.
Yep.
Do you just have to be dedicated radio, is that why you want radios or we can't use cell phones or, or something? I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what you guys got and.
So you, you're not supposed to be using cell phones when you're driving in the snowplow trucks. And that's why we have the two hand radios in there. So, we've been borrowing them from the police when they're done with it. So then we put them in it, um, and we've been piecemealing whatever it is.
Okay.
But in twenty twenty-seven, we were told that, um, whatever we have will be obsolete.
I mean, because you could do hands free. I mean, you could just have dedicated phones set up. I don't know.
Then you have a monthly service and everything else. Radios are the, you, you, you need to do a radio.
Okay, that's why I'm just asking. I don't.
No, and again, it's not coming till twenty twenty-seven, but I want to make sure that you're aware of it. Just, just to let you know. Um, page seventy-six, um, that's twenty twenty-seven cost. We found after you leave the McShane Lift Station, it's a twenty-four inch force main. It goes all the way from the McShane Lift Station to the border. Th- there's no valves in there. And we had a lift sh- we had a force main break and it was kind of a little troublesome to kinda repair. Because of the fact that we couldn't shut it off. So, um, we just have noticed that it would be probably a good idea to put a couple of valves in there. Since it's our main uh, force main leaving the city from McShane. Again, this is the one that takes the two thirds. Of, of our sewage and the fact that it's a long run, um, and it's a big one. It's a twenty-four inch force main. So it's not gravity, that's under pressure. So it's a.
So we had a break there a while ago and uh, if we would have had a valve, right where the break was, we would have put a valve right away, but it's kind of an odd. It's twenty-four inch, so nobody has this in stock. So, our thought process is, we had to shut off a bunch of stuff up by our metering station on Forest Home. We had to drain the whole force main in the hole. Um, again, there's a lake right there, so it was, it wasn't an easy job to do. So, we started thinking ahead, like, we need a valve, we need a valve to shut this off. If it ever, maybe it'll never happen again. It's ductile. The pipe looked really good when we, when we went down and dug it up, but. If it ever happens again, we need to try to isolate it. We can shut a valve off, so we're not draining the whole force main all the way back. When it was designed. It just wasn't a good design at all. They have no valves.
And you know, the easiest spot is where you splice for a break.
Right.
So where you put the valve.
So our thought process to get ahead of the game is if we could do it, plan it, well, we had normally planned it in August, which we found out August isn't very dry. But we would plan it during that and we could use our tank, our storage tank to buy, to port everything back in there, so we can, we can do this. It'd be a plan, not emergency like we had on a Sunday, to do this.
And that, and that again, is not till twenty twenty-seven. We're just letting you know. And then the last one for the sewer and is seventy-seven. Um, in twenty twenty-eight, we, we need a new lawnmower to cut all our, the, all the properties for sewer and water that we have. So, lift station wells, um, a couple places that look like houses, um, we cut the lawns, so. If you've been on the tour, you know what I'm talking about, so. And then water?
Yep.
Let's go to water. Let's find a page. Fifty-five? Five-five, thanks. Here, fifty-five, actuaries. If you want to talk about. So twenty twenty-six, well thirteen, the valves and the actuaries. Uh, need replacements. Yeah, you want to kinda give them an idea what that is?
So, that's well thirteen where we have our iron, big iron filter in that one on Knollwood Court. So, we've been rebuilding these actuators and valves and putting a ton of money into them, so, um. Had a contractor come in, looked at it, and we just, you know, just got it priced on different kind of valves. These valves, they said, well. They said it wasn't made for the operation, so, which I don't know how it wasn't, but, so we got prices on them, so we're gonna go forward with. Putting all the actuators and valves in them. So it's basically, I know you don't know how the system works, but. That, these valves are moving every time I do a backwash. Every time the filter goes through a backwash, these valves are always moving. They were sticking. Um, Steve replaced a bunch of them, put parts in them, so it's just, but, you know, we're gonna go the route of just putting new ones in them. That's all that really is for.
Um, moving on to page fifty-six, meters. Uh, again, this is our standard that we get asked for every year to replace meters. Or new bean, meters as new development happens.
We are behind on meter change outs. This has been in there for a while now, so um, we are gonna be sending more letters out for meter. Every twenty years, according to the PSC, we have to change, um, five eighth by three quarter inch meters. And we are way behind schedule on that.
Do you guys change them out yourself then?
Yes.
Is, is it expensive to hire someone to do something to catch up, or no?
Um, we norm, we typically try to do in the winter time where it's a little bit of slow time for us to do it, so I can, we can throw a couple of guys out there to do it. Um, pretty mu- we haven't really felt, you know, once, it's a, it's getting the people to call to make these appointments to get into houses to do them. That's the hard part.
I'd rather have our guys going into People's Home Center contractor anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we have our own IDs and everything on there, but, yeah. Um, moving on, page fifty-seven. Again, this is the uh, SCADA radio network replacement. This is again, we split it between the sewer and water for the, the sixteen sites in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Um, this is just the water side of it, again, that we split. Uh, fifty-eight is the truck that, um, again, it's a split. Uh, again, the same truck going on Wisconsin Surplus. It's just a split that we have on there. And then moving, uh, fifty-nine is a valve exercising unit. That won't be until twenty twenty-seven. Just to let you know, I'm just giving you kinda updates. Um, two-way handheld radios, again, twenty-seven is fifty-two. Um, thousand five hundred. Um, again, sixty-one. Page sixty-one is SCADA system upgrades, but again, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Uh, sixty-two is relay of water mains. If we ever do that, we keep pushing that down. Uh, we thought there would be a lot more breaks and there just hasn't been breaks, so that's, that's great for us. Um, the sixty-three is a lawnmower back in twenty twenty-eight. Um, sixty-four, at some point, uh, we threw in there five years down, we'll have to do a full water rate study. We can't just keep doing simplified ones. At some point, we'll have to do it, so I'm just kinda uh, pushing that out for about five years. And depending on where we are, we'll just kinda adjust that. But just to kinda give you guys an idea, um. But then the other one that's a good one is page sixty-five. We could talk about it. It's our water towers and painting. So, in twenty twenty-five, all our wa- all our towers are scheduled for inspection.
We just finished them, so.
And based off, once we do our inspection, that will adjust things as we move forward. So. Right now, with everything is, is going, twenty thirty is our next kinda round of when we're gonna inspect. But we're gonna inspect both the inside of the water towers and the outside of the water towers. And then, if we do have to paint Hill and Nail Tower that's fully inside and outside. Um, that will be, I think, construction, uh, engineering is a hundred twenty and five forty-nine. Again, once we get the inspection done in twenty twenty-five, we can push things out based off of that inspection. So we just make adjustments based as our inspections come. Just, it's just giving you updates, five-year plans, it's kind of a nice thing. Uh, sixty-six is our booster station. That Hill and Nail were seeing, we always pushed it down, no real interest in it. And then, we down the last one. On page sixty-seven, new water tower, we kicked that down. It's twenty thirty. Just to let you know. We do not have a water tower for pressure in the southeast part of the city. So, when we do have to do things, the, the pressure could, could be an issue if we have things. We just don't have a dedicated pressure tower down there. There's, everything's mostly up, up in this area. So, we're just planning for the future, giving you a cost, showing you that it's, it's three point eight million dollars. Which, which we might upsize to. Right now, it's only a two hundred fifty gallon. That is one that you see at the DPW. Two hundred fifty thousand gallons, same one that you would see at DPW.
Um, first, so is this where borrowing would come in, or is this, were you using all funds from water and utility?
So, so again, I'm gonna leave it to finance, but there's methods. You have water utility rates, you have borrowing. And also too, we, we collect rec, we collect R C, our, we collect RCA charges for water. Which is different from sewer. Don't, don't.
Well, I guess I'm just want, like the regular maintenance, maintenance things, we kinda see, but then when bigger things like this jump out. That are long-term things that are.
So the long-term for a placeholder, we put borrowing, it doesn't mean we're going to when we get to that. It's just, we don't know what we're gonna have for. Different operating funds, two, three, four years from now, so.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Any other questions on sewer water before Tim leaves?
Thank you, Tim.
Okay. We're gonna go to DPW.
Oh, when are you guys gonna do another tour?
Anybody that wants to go, um, there's a couple of new ones in here.
Have you?
Yeah, if, just let me know, email me. If, I'll, I'll be happy to take you guys out. I have no problem.
It's pretty cool.
I know a few are gone, Oliver and Wolf, you weren't here, um, Hamlet wasn't around, so, um, I know Dennis, you're with us, so, yeah, let me know. I, I have no problem.
I'd even go again. It was, I thought it was really eye-opening. And now when I drive by that stuff, I'm like, oh yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna switch to DPW.
Excuse me, did, did you cover page sixty-eight?
Yeah, that was the first one we started at.
Oh, okay.
Sixty-eight, uh, force main utility. That, that's the first one, remember for landfill?
Yeah.
Yep.
Fun way to spend your birthday?
Okay.
Fun way to spend your birthday?
Um, you know what? Let's start, actually, we can do engine, um, let's start thirty-five, because I wanna do a couple of things here. Okay. Starting with thirty-five, it, it's not for next year, but it's for twenty-seven. We're just, I'm letting you know because it's a new one. Um, in our planning department, we have a KIP and a CANON, and we would replace both of them, and then we would get one. This makes the large prints, okay? I know sometimes you guys get asked for maps. It's when we take our prints, we scan them in. It's, it's, it's one of the basic things that we use on an everyday basis. Um, I don't think we've gotten a new one since I've been here. And then we'd just be combining it, instead of having two, we'd have one. Again, this is not until twenty twenty-seven. But I just wanna kinda give you an idea, this is a new one, okay? Then moving on, we'll do engineering, page thirty-six. Um, in twenty twenty-seven, Test Corners Bridge, um, we wanna replace those four pipes with two-cell box coverts. Um, I am sure that those pipes got cleaned out pretty good a couple of weeks ago, um, and so we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it. Um, we are ready to go. Um, D and R permit plans, everything's ready to go, so our plan is to replace that in twenty twenty-seven.
Is there, is there any funds available for that?
There might be by then. Um, it depends on landfill.
I mean, it's, it, we've done this in other areas and got money for it, didn't we?
No, no, nope, nope.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is, this is strictly on us. Um, yeah, I don't know of any.
Okay. I didn't know if there was some kind of water, whatever.
Nope.
Whatever those funds are called, I forget the name of them, but.
Nope.
Okay.
Okay. Um, then moving on, page thirty-seven, we keep pushing this one. This is a Candlewood subdivision. Um, it's one of the things that, when it go wintertime, it goes tick, tick, tick. It's one of the things, if we ever decide to do something with the road program. It will probably go into the road program for, for a repair, rather than just being a capital, so. And now we're moving on to DPW, page thirty-eight, um, pressure washer. So, what we're asking for is a new pressure washer for our DPW shop. Um. I, I don't know, do you know how long our old one is, or would this be just?
This would be an additional pressure washer.
Two, so, um, again, it allows us to wash multiple vehicles at ti- one time. Again, we have two trucks in there. Why this is important? If we maintain our equipment, it's less us coming to ask you for the equipment. So that's kind of our goal here. So, any questions about the pressure washer?
Are they really that expensive?
This also includes, um, no, it's, it is.
I'm like thinking I can get one for a couple hundred bucks at Home Depot.
It's, it's, this is a commercial grade.
Yeah. This is rough penetration, upgrading the gas lines. Um, this, knowing this was coming. I, I had biz on increasing our water line. And, and we.
What is it, like a fire hose?
It, it's, it's a lot of pressure, a lot of heat. Yeah, yeah. We can get, I, unlike other communities. We dump our trucks after every storm. Everything gets washed, so that our trucks are lasting anywhere from fifteen to twenty years. Instead of like the five to ten that a lot of communities are on as far as.
Cause you're getting the salt off of them and.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. This is rough penetration, upgrading the gas line. This is everything that comes with this.
Hey, wait, those dump trucks you just asked for are only twelve years old. I'm just kidding.
So, moving on, and then we're moving over to page thirty-nine, uh, forklift. Uh, our, our existing forklift that needs to be replaced. Uh, the current forklift will be sold on Wisconsin Surplus. It is thirty years old with current hours of fifteen thousand four hundred fifty. Again, that is when I turned this into Jenny. So I'm again assuming more hours on it, um, has been put on, so. Moving on, uh, page forty, um, looking for a hot patch gen-two trailer. So what this will allow us to do is DPW staff to carry two tons of hot asphalt around the city, um, to help maintain their roads. This can be used year-round, so we can go grab, there's always one plant that's open, so we can always go grab asphalt during even the wintertime. And then allow us to do larger patch jobs. Um, we can do it instead of contracting out. And as you see, we have more and more potholes and bigger jobs to do, so this is going to be used a lot, probably.
So we have one now?
We have a insert that goes in the back of one of our small one-ton dump trucks. It's hard to maintain heat. Um, we park it inside, plug it in at night. It has its own regen system in it with just the equivalent of, um, how warm your radiator would get. So we're outdoing everything. As soon as we wanna use it, it's exposed the elements and it tightens up right away and we're.
So we're gonna get rid of that and just do one here?
Correct, yeah. It's very inefficient, well, the one we have now.
And, and we'll put on Wisconsin Surplus, and I'm sure someone will buy it. Everyone seems to look at that site. Um, again, the big item, page forty-one, is our plow truck. Again, we only ask this for every other year. Uh, we didn't ask for one for last year. Um, this is the one that, uh, used to be in operating. We pulled out a couple of years ago and just do a capital every other year. The old plow truck is an International seventy-four hundred. Its year is two thousand four, mileage is eighty-three thousand seven hundred eighty, hours seven thousand six hundred eighty. And it's showing, uh, mechanical decline, so.
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, so this, uh, this three hundred thousand looks like it'd be paid for from landfill funds. Is that kinda getting into the same thing we, we talked about with the fire truck, where we're paying for it upfront, and it's a twenty-plus year piece of equipment? Which we should maybe be paying through borrowing?
No, this is, uh, what's the life on these?
Uh, this is more in the, well, what do we replace with?
Two thousand four, so.
This is a patrol truck.
What's that?
Is it patrol trucks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. So the one that we are replacing, um, is showing a lot of mechanical decline. It is a backup. Um, but when we go out, everybody goes out. So if one truck goes down, when everybody's plowing. I am replacing about like, we're in like the ten to fifteen, uh, we're more in the fifteen to twenty year replacement for these trucks.
So I guess he's not talking about the, the, if, to replace or not, it's just a matter of how we're paying for.
Yeah, do you, do you think you should borrow it? Because the discussion was like, any item that's over twenty years, kinda like a roads. Should we do this one more based off of like borrowing it be, all the time, because it's, it lasts fifteen to twenty years? Again, probably why, because we're maintaining them pretty well. You know, we have a mechanic, um, that, that might be something that.
I guess what I would recommend at this point would be to decide if you want it, yes or no, and then at the end, Jenny and I can look at, see what things we. If we, if there's anything we're left that we're gonna have to borrow for, um, maybe shift this to landfill and borrow for that. I mean, it's kind of a horse piece, how you do it, but. Yeah.
A- as a reminder, whether we do this or not, once we do pull the trigger on this, even if it were today, I won't see it for fourteen to sixteen months. That's how long it takes to get built, so. By the time stuff is happening, it's definitely not gonna be in service in twenty-six. Yep, yeah.
Do you, you have to, you have to pay for it right away, though? Is that?
Correct. So, we, we pay.
Pay for it when you order it?
We sign a contract as soon as we get it. I do not pay for it until it's completed. The, the, it comes in two pieces, the chassis, cabin chassis. And I send it up to Cottage Grove and the rest of the equipment goes on it to get built. So we pay in full on completion. But they also wanna know that we're good for it.
And, and we're not asking, once you approve it, we're not asking for any letters to give us anything. January first, if you approve it of twenty twenty-six, then we'll, we'll, we'll place the, well, January second, because we're probably closed January first. But we'll, um, we'll place that order to do it, just to let you know. But that, from that time, Trivin, January second. Like Ryan said, fourteen to sixteen months, we'll see it.
Yep, and then you pay for it on completion, so is that really a, uh, you know, this.
We, we have.
Is that really a twenty-seven?
We just, we just roll over the capital and I mean, we have to like.
Typically, they have no problem with me paying before it's done, so. As soon as we get cabin chassis, yes. We cut them a check for the cabin chassis and then on the tail end of the build, sometimes they ask for fifty upfront. What I noticed with the last two times I got it built, if we pay in total upfront, we get a, almost a two percent discount on the equipment. Just because then they're not stretching out all that money and all the parts and everything that they're paying the bank for. So if I pay upfront, we receive a little bit of a discount on it also.
How long is the build of the second part? Like, once you get the chassis?
That is where, I can go get a cabin chassis tomorrow. It's the build part that holds us up.
Okay.
So it's, uh.
Two percent might not make sense.
Yep.
Well, you know, I thought that's a, a good point to, to, to bring up about borrowing, because it gets me thinking about the old PD. And how much that's gonna be and what we're gonna do with the money and how we're gonna take care of, uh, I mean, I think the direction pretty much was to demolish it. Maybe one or two altern, alternate ideas, but pretty much demolishing it. If we look at borrowing some of this money. Or borrowing the money for the PD, we can have that accomplished in twenty twenty-six. Just throwing it out there.
The, uh, yeah, the other thing you're gonna, that will come up later is the fire department's buildings. There's about roughly a million dollars in there. Repairs they need that just popped up, so.
We own their buildings?
Mm-hmm.
All of them?
Through, through the dissolution agreement, they essentially are ours. Well, we can get into that later.
Oh, oh, we do. I thought that when we did the dissolution, they took the buildings.
No.
I got it backwards?
Just one thing, if, if you do talk about demolishing the PD, he's got something to say about it.
Yeah, you, you'll see the col- we'll talk about this, I'm just.
He's got it as a twenty twenty-seven item right now, but if you talk about demolishing it in twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff that's gonna trigger what happens at the old PD and what's gonna have to happen at Public Works and everything else with the fire department.
As long as we're not putting Band-Aids on things, that's what we gotta discuss. You're right.
Yeah, correct.
Correct. So, moving on, um, page forty-two, this is our, just the truck that we want in twenty twenty-six. We want a three-quarter ton pickup, um, the truck that's being put on Wisconsin Surplus. It's a Chevy thirty-five hundred, year two thousand three. Mileage one hundred sixty-five thousand five hundred fifty. Moving on, page forty-three, small equipment and tools. Uh, again, this is the stuff, power tools, hand tools, mechanically special tools, equipment to run a shop. We ask for about five thousand dollars a year. It can be a variety of it. It's big enough where we, we just ask for a capital. Moving on to forty-four, again. Moving on to forty-four, again, this is our handheld radios. This is DPW's portion, two hundred forty-five thousand dollars in handhelds in twenty-twenty-seven. Ryan's been doing an investigation on this.
So explain, to explain this, right now, um, if I had to talk to chief or captain, the radios that they have on right now are very complex. They're, they're good for the next, I don't want to jinx it, but at least ten to fifteen years. The radios that we have at DPW are not complex. It is no more, no different than a two-way radio, but what happens in emergency situations is I can talk directly to dispatch. This, this was proven two weeks ago when dispatch was inundated with so many calls at non-emergency line, you couldn't even get a call. So I was talking with them directly, um, talking to the cops directly. When we had an ice storm last winter, um, the only way we made it through is I can't, um, do a mass call to my eighteen guys at the same time and put them all on speakerphone while they're plowing snow. It's a quick, this is where I am, this is what needs to be done. At the same time, we work with dispatch to make sure that everything gets done. There is four style radios that are going to be obsolete that the Waukesha Tower that runs our system will not support as far as twenty-twenty-seven.
Now, this is all going through the PD?
This is all going to the tower out in Waukesha. We, we're all on it. Everybody's on it. Racine County just joined. Every, everything. So when this starts, it's not that it's just, they're not going to just shut the lights off. What's going to happen, and what's going to happen in twenty-six already is the small things like knobs, buttons, cords, those I can still get. If a radio goes down, let's say a screen goes out or something internally, that's a thirty-five hundred dollar radio that is now, we can't use anymore. So this is, the two forty-five is on the high end, but this is me replacing all of our radios, handheld and equipment throughout the whole department. And another thing to say on that, this will be good for, this will be an upgrade, but a couple of years, we went from analog to digital. This will make us good for at least the next ten to fifteen.
So I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
So I know that that's for twenty-twenty-seven, those radios, but I know the police department also wants some new radios. Is there any way you could take their radios and make it work for you?
It's possible. I wouldn't, I was, but have been in talks with Lieutenant Rosaski on what we can do, and I know he used to handle that stuff in the past. Um, this is something where we could probably take their radios over. The biggest cost is we're not going to be able, we're still going to have to replace our base radios. We could definitely take over our handheld radios, but our base radios and our equipment is going to have to change at some point. But we'll definitely look into that before we go and purchase it. This is more or less to get this in front of you guys.
To give you a warning.
It's a huge, huge purchase.
How many radios does the police department have? Because you're looking for seventy or something, if I saw correctly.
Yeah, I think we have seventy-two, maybe.
Oh, so they're, they're up in that range. Okay.
There has been, like Waukesha County, there, I think this year alone, Waukesha County Highway is sticking a million dollars into it, and they're giving them handhelds that they're going to just keep in their trucks. And hopefully it stays on the base unit and the battery doesn't die, just because they have to stay ahead of it.
Is there other communities that will still be able to use these units that we can get rid of?
Talking with the tower, they've, they flash the radios and they, we would have to give them all back to the power.
No, I'm talking about if we sell them, can we sell them?
Correct. They, they have to unflash all their radios, which were coming across, and then hopefully find somebody up north that's still on analog or that just wants to use them, more or less you and I talking back and forth two-way, if that is supported on their tower. So no. Easiest way to put it is not really.
Yeah, um, just to pipe in, we're talking, obviously, I'm working, um, in Waukesha County now as a supervisor, and this is a big discussion because all the municipalities are going to have to.
Yeah.
Be upgraded for the new system. So everybody's got a budget for, everybody's.
Yeah, we really have no choice in the past, just because when we would upgrade, you can't just upgrade some. We're buying the seventy, right? So the current, I don't even know what it costs, but I remember we upgraded, um, maybe ten years ago, and it was a huge chunk, and we worked with the PD to take on what we could, but.
Well, and I think too, it's going to be budgeting for new ones every ten years or fifty, what, something like that, and also upgrades in the, um, technol- like, you're going to have to do upgrades every like five to seven years on them. They're going to need maintenance like that, upgrading.
Right now, if I had a radio go down in a truck, it would cost us thirty-eight hundred dollars and probably take me six months to get. So.
Okay.
Um, moving on, page forty-five, um, looking in twenty-twenty-seven to get a new crane to assist with the heavy loading, uh, instead of manual labor, uh, help reduce injuries and provide efficiencies in the shop. Um, for example, attaching, detaching snow, snow pile blades from the truck. That's in twenty-twenty-seven, just kind of.
It's a shop crane, so not, not something you'll see on wheels going out.
Yeah, yeah. Shop crane. Um, and then forty-six, why this is important is cold storage. So we store a lot of our equipment over in the old PD, and the reason why is we do not want to buy new equipment and we want to make sure it's protected. So whatever you decide to do as a council, we got to figure out where to put all this equipment. And our goal was always to kind of push that down, but if, whatever you decide, that could, that could come up real quick. I'm just going to let you know. And I think the amount of money that we spend on equipment, the last thing you want us to do is just keep it out in the yard and winter, salt, whatever, get into it. And we, we, we really want to take care of the equipment no matter what. So that is why it's twenty-twenty-seven. Um, but I'm, we're, we're, we just want to give you a fair warning, whatever you guys decide to do. Now, I don't know, if you keep for storage, whatever, we, we can push that back, but there's just other factors that, that you decide. So.
The price also reflects, after talking with Adam, um, we can't just put a pole barn up. We have to, you know, we set the staple for what's in the city. It has to have fifty percent masonry on it. Um, we can't just put up a pole barn and say, well, the city can do this when it's their turn, but I want to do a business and I can't do a pole barn. So that cost reflects that. We have to meet all of our planning codes and architecture and structures and everything else. So, um, that is why the price is what the price is.
And, and the location where you guys want to put this?
Between DPW and utilities? We have a lot of land over there. Again, it makes sense.
So we have the land. We have the spot.
Yeah, like, like, if you've been over there, if you go in the backyard between DPW, we have plenty, plenty of land. Yeah.
And doesn't it seem like that would be more convenient to have it all there too?
Uh, whatever, if, we just want to know that there's a cost.
I just want to make sure it's inside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Oh, is it a more convenience? Well, of course, yeah. If it's just right there, it makes it way more convenient for everyone.
You, you, you know, during planning, people can ask for variances on where things are located, how they look and stuff, depending on how far off the road, what you can see and can't see. So, uh, standards are, are good as guidelines. Um, and when people in the community have to pay for something for tax dollars, I would think that we should be able to look with the planning department for some variances to reduce our costs. And I would definitely be in favor of that rather than having to put extra masonry and things on a building that is supporting businesses and communities of people that we make do that, uh, just because we want to look pretty in a DPW yard. And in, in return, it's going to reduce their taxes where we're giving services by the stuff that, so we should not have to follow the plan by a hundred percent. I think we, we can ask for a variance, and I think that, uh.
That's about me. I just, I wanted to shoot high, just, just in case.
Well, I'm just saying, yeah, I agree with you.
If the guy in the industrial park.
We tell people to cut their grass, you better cut the grass.
Yeah, again, I understand all that.
Guy in the industrial park next door to us has to put a billing up twice the price.
Yeah, and depending where it is and how we hide it and put it, I mean, you know, it only makes sense, you know, it, you try to give a business, uh, an extra advantage, you save some money too.
Whatever you decide to do or the planning commission decides to do for a exception to our standards, better plan on the next business that follows through with something similar, that we're going to do the same for them or we will not.
Well, I think there's a difference between spending tax dollars.
It's a tax dollar, yeah.
And some private business. I, I do think there's a little bit of difference there.
Again, this is up to you, but I know.
Well, there has been some variances. I know. I was on the planning board and we've made some.
I, I do know that, um, we always get questioned of, hey, you know, well, do you do this in yours at City Hall or Library? And we, we show them examples, just, just to let you know.
And then, and then when you build a new city hall, a school, a police station, then they complain about all the money you spent. So it's a double-edged sword, you know, it, it, you, you try to create a budget for them and make, and give them services just to house the stuff so we don't have to buy more stuff more often. Uh, I think, you know, here, I'll put the common stamp, you know, common sense stamp on this and, and at least try to give it a, a go. And if the planning department says no, bring it up to the council. Let us decide. We're the ones that are taking all the heat for everything anyway, you know?
Just as you guys know, as this moves forward, whatever happens with the old PD, this is definitely going to trigger this. So not that it, it is, oh, let's think about it now. It has to be simultaneously happen, if not done prior to anything happening over there.
But I don't, you know, the way I look at the old PD is, do we want to put a Band-Aid on it? And do we want to use that property, uh, in this area here that connects everything? You know, I mean, if we want to do something there, maybe we need to tear it down and wait for the right thing to do there and build it correctly. So that's a whole nother conversation on, I, I think we've given direction as a council, what we're going to do with the PD. Uh, cold storage has always been a, a, a part of it, but, uh, I, I'm not sure that's not putting a Band-Aid on that, on that property there.
Okay. Um, moving on to page forty-seven, salt shed, uh, not until twenty-thirty, but it's, that's there, just kind of letting you guys know. Um, did we talk about the We Energies Trail? Is, I just?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Um, is there any other ones? I, I think I covered a lot. Any other ones that do an, Old Tom Repaul or the fire station stuff? You want to talk about the fire station?
Schedules for tonight or?
I, uh.
You want to come here?
Both of them don't fall underneath me, so I, I'm.
I'll say, no.
And they, and they could go for next time, guys. I'm, I'm, unless you want to keep going.
No, that's fine. We're getting late.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, we're done?
Anything, any questions on, any last questions or direction on the stuff we covered tonight besides what we already talked about?
How long would it take you to build the cold storage?
Less than a year, but there's a planning to that also. So.
Okay.
We'd want to be turnkey as soon as the sunset date would be on the old PD.
Yep, be able to move it in.
That stuff comes over.
Say year, say one year. Get one year and then we're covered. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Fair.
Yep, thank you.
All right.
Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.